Okay, I call the meeting to order and I'd like to motion to adopt remote participation as written in the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call vote, starting with Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigue Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Woods Spaulding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulveneden, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Okay, to my knowledge, we've received no prior public comments. We go to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda has a number of items on. I'm just going to make one comment before I put it up for a vote. The comment is that the FinCom did look at the item approval of prior year invoices. There are two. They were listed in your packet with an explanation. And the FinCom approved of these items. So I'm going to put the
Jeff, can I? Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
I have to abstain on the first two minutes, so I don't know how you do that with this.
Let's see. You don't have to abstain. You actually can vote on minutes that you where you were not there.
Okay.
Typically, we don't do that unless there's we need it to have a quorum, but you can actually vote on those minutes.
Okay, I'm okay then. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda and then we can work our way through it.
So moved.
Second. Discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda. Very well, then bring it to a vote. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigue Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Woods Spaulding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulveneden, yes. Alice?
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Very good. Principals report. Katie Bouchard. And there's Katie right there. Katie's on mute still.
Yep. Hi all, how are you? Let me just, I have one of our students. I'll send her the link. One second. Julia, can I share my screen? Is that also?
All say Katie.
Thank you. I'm struggling to share my screen tonight. One moment. Can you see it? Great. So thank you all for being tonight. This is the principals report and also the student report. So we should have with us Kate Taki, Emmett River and Riley. So we'll get started with our Skills USA presentation.
Hi, my name is Kate Taki. I'm the president of our skills chapter. So the Minuteman chapter of Skills USA attended the Fall State Leadership Conference from November 19th to 20th in Marlboro. We sent five of our officers and one student community member and we ended up competing and winning five silver medalists who are listed below. And the new wedding cake decorating competition was also unveiled, which our advisors competed in. And they won one bronze medal from the judges and then won the gold medal in spectators' choice awards.
Great, thank you. And next we have Emmett.
I'm Emmett. I'm the community service liaison for the Skills USA Minuteman chapter. Skills USA, our Minuteman chapter has also been increasing our community service efforts this year. We set up a donation bin in the front hall this November and collected over 23 bags of clothing, winter coats and footwear that we quality checked and sorted. In addition, we have lots of other drives planned as well as a couple volunteering events at Drumland Farm and the Cradles to Crowns Giving Factory.
Thank you so much. Any questions for our Skills USA students?
I have a question. Do you have slices of that cake for the school committee members, the wedding cake? Is that something that you're having delivered this evening to us where we are?
They were actually made of foam, so no.
Yeah, fake cake.
Fake cake, okay.
Fake cake.
Just wondering, you know, you never can tell on these things. I cannot see all the members, so you're gonna have to speak up if you have a question. Well, then I hear no questions, so onward.
Great, thank you. And next up, we have River.
Hello, everybody. So right before Thanksgiving break, we had our pep rally and powder puff game. So during the pep rally, we celebrated all of the fall sport teams. We had the cheerleaders cheerleading with each girls cheerleaders as well as our powder puff boy cheerleaders, as we can see doing the pyramid right there. We also had a three-legged race and pie eating contest, which was also also fun. And as a, to begin a tradition again, as I mentioned last meeting that I spoke, we had our powder puff game between our senior girls and junior girls as a flag football game. We had football coaches and teachers and football players all join being coaches and nothing. Yeah, it was super fun. And yeah, thank you.
Great. Any questions for River on the powder puff or the pep rally?
Alice?
What kind of pie and which one was the favorite?
So it was all whipped cream and of course we had Mr. English win as he always does. And yeah, just whipped cream.
Great.
Did you mention who won the powder puff game?
Unfortunately, the junior girls won the game, but it was great. Everybody had fun.
Other comments or questions? Very good.
Great. All right. Next up is Riley, so she just got online, so I'll give her a second. She's going to be presenting on the National Honor Society Drive and for Toys for Tots. So Riley?
Hi, everyone. So the National Honor Society is partnering with the U.S. Marines Toys for Tots Foundation. Students were able to leave new unwrapped toys by the front entrance of the school in the Toys for Tots boxes. This took place from the last week in November until December 8th. And you know, this is a great way to help bring joy to children that otherwise may go without gifts this holiday season. And so this week, the Community Service Club started a holiday card activity that is going to be sent to senior citizens. So Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, students can join the Community Service Club members at a table full of fun decorative supplies and create their own holiday cards. So even within just two days, there's already over 87 cards made. And we still have one more day left tomorrow and the cards will be distributed on Thursday to the Woburn Rehabilitation and Nursing Center.
Great, thanks so much, Riley. Any questions for Riley on either the Toys for Tots Drive or the Community Service Holiday Cards?
Alice?
Just want to say it looks like a very nice thing to do.
Thank you.
Great. That concludes our student reports.
Okay, thank you so much to all the students who are giving up pressure homework time to keep the school committee members to remind them what the school is really about. Because we need that on a regular basis, believe me. Okay. Subcommittee reports. We have a good one for you. Lot of juice in this report. Pam Norris. We have a special guest host for this part of this report here too. So go ahead, Pam.
Okay, thank you. This is the report from the screening committee and I would like to introduce Ray Shirtlift from the Collins Center who is here today. So the screening committee had its first meeting, first full meeting on December 6th where Ray and one of his colleagues led the meeting going through the responsibilities of the screening committee and our timeline. And before turning it over to Ray, I just wanted to take a moment. We did send the timeline out to school committee members, but others have not seen it. So I thought that I would just take a moment to share it. So just to do a quick walkthrough. This brings us you know, from where we are now and you know, you'll see our first orientation meeting was here on the 6th. The vacancy notice has been posted and the deadline for applications is December 22nd. The screening committee will then meet in January to review the applications, you know, develop our interview questions and hold initial interviews that third week in January. By the 25th, our goal is for to be identifying candidates, our finalists, that will be forwarding to the school committee. So from that point on, you know, the process moves from the screening committee to the school committee. There on February, we have set aside February 5th, 6th and 8th for a chance for finalists to come to the school. So this is not just says here interviews with school committee, but what this is, is the day when finalists can come to the school, meet with students, faculty, and I have a chance to have a community forum as well as interviews with the school committee members. We've set aside time for site visits as needed with a goal of having a decision by mid-February. So that's the timeline that we've laid out. It is, you know, very aggressive, but it's one that we feel like we can stick to and you know, Ray has a lot of confidence in his experience that this is a reasonable timeline. So with that, I will turn it over to Ray.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Glad to meet all of you by Zoom. At some point in time, we'll meet all of you in person through this process. I just introduced myself a little bit. I've been a middle school teacher, a high school teacher. I came to Rynchon Latin School for 22 years, back when Rynch Tech was an all-male technical vocational program back in the early 70s. I've been an HR director in Newton and Boston. Retired for three months back in 2004 and then I've been an interim HR director in a couple of other communities. And I've been consulting with the Collins Center since 2013. Prior to that, I did some labor management facilitation work both here in Massachusetts and out in Colorado. I've taught a personnel class in four different colleges over the years. Primarily UMass Boston. And I've been doing consulting with the Collins Center around central office studies and organizational studies and executive searches, both superintendent, assistant superintendent and high school principals. My colleague, John Brackett, who's assisting me with this process, has 22 years' experience as a superintendent, both in Michigan and Massachusetts. He's been a coach in the superintendent's induction program. He's run several of the searches that we've done over the years and we've been working together often on since 2006 on these kinds of processes. So I very much enjoyed the first orientation meeting. We actually covered a lot of the issues on our agenda in depth. The screening committee meetings moving forward consistent with the law are going to be an executive session. Both our next screening meeting and interviews and decisions that we forward on to the school committee. We talked about the role of the screening committee. And the full committee here has asked the screening committee to forward a small number of names to them. It is your decision as a school committee among the finalists that move forward. So the screening committee has some important work to do and it's a 12-member screening committee and consisting of people from the community, from the school and from the school committee. We talked about the importance of confidentiality. And that's critically important for a screening committee. Discussions that take place in the screening committee executive sessions remain there. And at times, screening committee members are under pressure from their colleagues, constituents to let people know what's going on and they can't do that because it is executive session. And I'm very confident on this screening committee's ability to kind of deal with that. I've actually have never had a problem with confidentiality in these situations. We reviewed the documents that are on the superintendent's search link on the school, on the webpage. We talked, we reviewed quickly the vacancy notice, which described the position and the application process. The superintendent profile, which you all developed prior to our arrival, a very extensive document that we make available to all applicants and certainly to those that are coming in for an interview once they're selected for an interview. The district profile was a marvelous document, 16 pages. And I encourage anyone outside of the school committee that clearly have looked at it, but to kind of take a look at it. I've never seen a document as part of a superintendent's search process that's quite so comprehensive. And it's very helpful. And then the search timeline that Pam went over. We talked about future meeting dates. And it's a major commitment that the screening committee members are making to this, not only the potential of four meetings moving forward, but a number of hours to take a look at all the application materials. And after the deadline of December 22nd, those, all those application materials that we've made available, excuse me, to the screening committee. And we guide them through a process of looking at them and then when we get together in January 10th, we review where people are at and then select a number of people to come in for an interview. We have we have three nights set up for interviews, the maximum. I believe you can only do really three a night or afternoon and evening. But we'll see how many people the screening committee wants to meet. As part of that process, we have to have an interview that maybe goes 50 minutes to an hour. And there are only so many questions that can be asked during that timeframe, but we, we decide as a screening committee what those questions are and ask those same questions to each candidate. And and then the decision night, which is scheduled to be on the 24th, our decision night, the screening committee decision night. And then names, a summary of all those names and their application materials for cover letter, resume, pre-current letters of reference. All go to the school committee and they become public, obviously. So I think that probably covers the major piece that we covered. It's a really intensive process and our goal, Dr. Brackett's goal and I, our goal to, is to have this 12-member screening committee be a community. We've set some norms in terms of how we communicate with each other within our meetings. And there are high standards and my experience is it's a really positive process. We can agree to disagree perhaps and while the consultants don't take part in the discussion, it's the screening committee. But we facilitate the discussion. So we're very optimistic. While I can't talk about the potential and future applicants, I can say that John and I have worked hard in terms of outreach and we're confident that the screening committee will have some difficult decisions to make. And our goal, I might have stated a long time ago, is to make your decision as a school committee among those small number of finalists, a very difficult decision. So so we're very positive about everything to date and I'd be glad to answer any questions that members of the community or the school committee have.
School committee members, any questions? Let's begin with Erica. Erica's on mute.
All right. Sorry. Like lost my, there we go. Okay. Yeah, I just had a question. It sounds like you've put a lot of work into getting the word out there in order to get good candidates, but I did. When I was looking at the timeline, it did seem like a very short timeline, like the posting was mid-November. And then we're accepting applicants until December 22nd. So seems like a, like a very short period of time. Is that a shorter than normal or is that a pretty
But it's pretty standard.
Accepted.
It's pretty standard. I have to look at my calendar, but I think we posted on on something like November 8th, maybe even a day or two before then. So you know, five weeks is pretty standard, you know. And we're running into, you know, the holiday timeframe, etc. So we could theoretically have extended it to January 2nd and the problem there is that would push the whole process back. And I think our goal was to have the school committee make a decision before February vacation. Now, what we can't guarantee is that we have lovely weather as we did last year and there are no school days and no snowstorms and etc. So we we have to kind of be prepared for our traditional New England weather, but I think we have some flexibility to do that. So and, and I would, I would say although it's not part of your question, there are about eight other superintendent searches that are just winding down in terms of their application process or still taking place. So we're actually in a good place to start. And we're the, to my knowledge, we're the only vocational technical school that is doing a superintendent directed search.
Darren, I think you had your hand up.
I did. I'm just, I know that the committee will be bringing forward the applicants that they want us to choose from. Do we ever learn like how many people actually applied or is that something that stays in executive session?
No. Once I write the memo after the screening committee determines the names of the people that are moving forward. And I will write a summary memo to the school committee in which I kind of summarize the process and say we've received X number of applicants and the screening committee has reviewed all those application materials, had a discussion, etc. So I know I saw something in the newspaper about another search in which the school committee chair said, well, we have X number of applicants. Well, you know, we don't do it that way, you know, once things become public, you know, on January 25th, so to speak, when I send a memo on, you know, then everything becomes public, you know. You know, Pam may have a different opinion on that, but I believe that I understand the importance of transparency, but I also understand the importance of working with the screening committee and confidentiality.
Oh, can I just jump in there, Ray? So certainly the numbers, you know, can become public. What doesn't become public are the applicants who are not chosen to be finalists. I just wanted to be very clear about that.
Correct, correct.
Any other questions from school committee members? Erica?
Yeah, I just had a question. So in the unlikely case that the screening committee just isn't satisfied with the candidates. Would the, would there be some type of extension or what would, what would happen at that point?
Well, theoretically, if by December 22nd there is an insufficient pool of candidates, I certainly would be talking with Pam about that. I don't anticipate that happening at all. And if the screening committee looks at all the applicants and interviews the number of people that they want and they're not satisfied with, you know, moving names forward, then theoretically, the process could be extended or started all over again.
Any other questions? Very well, then I think that, thank you very much, Ray. And so we're going to be very, very busy over the next few months. Really busy. So be prepared. And let me point out that most of these meetings that you saw on that sheet, those are in person. So because we're going to interview the candidates in person, so the screening committee has about eight. Theoretically, eight in-person meetings over a period of about six weeks and the school committee members will have three or whatever, four in-person meetings. So it's going to be very busy and we are concerned about snow dates to push the process into the future. But I think that as Ray mentioned, there is enough a lot of work went into it to get this process launched quickly, to give enough time to do things like that the applicants come in and the process that the screening committee is going through is going to be very, very tight. And one of the reasons to make it so tight is to allow for eventualities like missed school days and whatnot. So it's going to be a fairly intense process, but hopefully it'll be over on the date that Ray said it's going to be over and we won't have to change that. We'll see. Any other comments, Pam, on this item?
That's it. Thank you.
That's it. Okay. Thank you, Pam, and thank you very much, Ray. We look forward to seeing much of you in the, over the next few months.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chair's report for the good of the organization. Well, we do have something good to say for the organization in that all the bureaucratic obstacles have been achieved and Kevin has all the waivers he needs to remain as our interim superintendent until June 30th. That's all we have to say about that. That's all taken care of now. Any other comments for the good of the organization at this time? And we're going to talk about the Navy visit later, which is kind of for the good of the organization, but that has its own place coming up. Sharon?
Yeah, I know that I say this all the time, but I just think it's really a great opportunity to check out the, you know, the soup group on Thursdays. Now we've got the bake sale on Fridays. The flower shop is now open on Thursdays and Fridays. Is that right, Katie? I think it's Thursdays and Fridays. You know, so it's just, it's a really great opportunity to get in there and see what the kids are doing and it's pretty awesome. So if you get a chance, if you're nearby, I strongly encourage you. And right now it's the, well, the soup group order is for like special holiday stuff, like cookies and things for next week. So don't miss out.
Very good. Discussion on in-person meetings. We are going to postpone that until at least March, since as I said, we have a lot of in-person meetings coming up. So as for a short period of time, it's kind of irrelevant. If it's going to be what it's going to be. Report on the 2023 MASC, MAS joint conference. Charlene attended and she saw some things that she thought was worth talking about.
Good evening, all. As Jeff just stated, I did attend the MASC MAS conference, November 8th through 11th in, at the Cape. So for those of you who do not know, the MASC is divided into 10 districts. The Voc Tech schools are District Eight. And District Tech 10, which is the district we all belong to, really just revolves around issues of diversity. And District Tech Ten, which is the district we all belong to, really just evolve revolves around issues of diversity, equity, and justice. I went to a number of programs. When you go to these, there's a number of programs at the same time, so you kind of have to pick and choose. Um, and some I couldn't attend because I was doing a lot of subcommittee work that weekend or those days. But I did attend Voc Tech Issues One and Two. The Division Eight has a new president, which is Charlie Ellis of the Shoba Valley Voc Tech. He is urging all school committees to start their own legislative action group. Uh, he wants all the Voc Tech schools to become much more political and start influencing legislation. There was concerns about two major issues in Voc Tech, which is capacity. A lot of students want to get into Voc Tech schools and there doesn't seem to be enough space for everyone who's interested. Um, and also the MCAS, what would happen if the MCAS were to go away? You know, nothing was resolved, but there were some discussion about concerns. If the MCAS goes away, will it be a bad thing for Voc Tech schools? Because it would suggest, or, or it could return this negative notion that Voc Tech schools do not achieve academically. And the MCAS has been able to show that Voc Tech schools do achieve academically. There was an attorney, Anthony Abdallahad of Ventry Associates, who spoke about a MAVA bill, the Mass Association of Vocational Administrators Bill. They're looking to expand Voc Tech education, change reimbursement formula to give extra funding to Voc Tech schools. Put a rep from MAVA on the MSBA board. Uh, and also they want a DESI access policy to promote Voc Tech success. They want absolute access to seventh and eighth graders to promote enrollment at Voc Tech schools. Those, that's the, you know, key part that I wanted to share with the committee. I also attended Blackstone Valley Cooperative Session, Medicaid Session, Special Ed, Education Law, Artificial Intelligence, and Diversity Equity programs. And I have like a list of vendors and everything. So if anyone has specific questions or concerns and they want to hear more about the conference, I'm happy to speak to anyone about it.
My first question is, did you find going to the conference to be a valuable experience for you?
I did. Um, I met a lot of people. I thought that the conference was well done. The, the only thing that frustrated me about the conference is I would have liked to have gotten all of the materials online, which was not always available. And I had to like go ask the presenters if they could send me information and all that. Um, but it was, it was a very good conference and a great opportunity to meet people and ask people questions specifically, you know, how do you deal with this in your district? Have you seen this, you know? Um, and learn about different districts. So I thought it was rather invaluable. I, I enjoyed it.
Okay. Other questions for Charlene regarding this conference or any of the topics that she mentioned in her? I'm kind of interested in a summary of the topics they discussed about AI. I assume it was AI in education is what they were interested in.
Yeah, so it's kind of funny. Um, you know, I, I purposely didn't say anything about this because I think, I, I don't want to like, um, insult anyone's intelligence at, at Minuteman, because you all know a hell of a lot more about tech stuff than I do. But AI is based on predictive text. Uh, it isn't human text. The concern is the pros and cons of AI in teaching. And the person who was presenting, actually, I don't have the book here. I have it in my closet, but um, he wrote a book on the topic and I have a, a copy of the book. So if anyone's interested in reading it, but he was talking about how, you know, the first couple of paragraphs you get when you put in an AI query about a topic are pretty relevant because it's based on predictive text and that is the bulk of what people are discussing on the topic. But then it goes downhill pretty fast when you start looking into the third or fourth paragraph. So when it comes to teaching, they suggested that perhaps you start a project in class and you do the predictive text AI stuff. So you get those first couple of paragraphs out of the way. And then you have the students write further. And basically it suggested do a lot of your writing in class to avoid the AI kind of nightmare.
So Kevin, this is being a, a techie, being a programmer since nineteen seventy and watching the rise of AI over all those years. I am extremely concerned about the impact of AI on education from both a home work point of view and a test-taking point of view, all these things that are coming up. So I'm wondering if, if Minuteman has a developed a strategy for AI. I don't know if any of the schools around here really thought it through or developed the strategy or policy. And if so, I would, I would appreciate a report on that to the school committee in the not-so-distant future. I haven't checked up on the topic and I, I'm very concerned.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring that up in our administrative meetings. We'll report back that at a future meeting.
Thank you very much. Other hands. Ford.
Um, Charlene, you mentioned legislative advocacy and the school committees participating in that. Um, Alice has been a strong proponent of that. And I think that's extremely important, uh, that we have representation of that kind. I have helped MAVA in a testimony up in Beacon Hill and the Education Committee is related to lotteries. And that's one thing that MAVA is very concerned about is having a lottery system for uh, vocational education. I'm told that there are roughly seven thousand students in Mass Commonwealth not able to get into a vocational school because they're filled. And there's a group of people that are fairly strong lobby that is saying lottery is the way to go. And that will help of all kinds of children to get in who maybe don't get in because of admissions policies. Ours would be an exception to that. Um, however, the lottery does not uh, allow to help seven thousand students get in. What they need is, is more vocational schools that are similar to Minuteman or even vocational programs in larger comprehensive high schools. And I think it's very important that Minuteman take a stand in that um, going on in the future. And, and this is, there's a current bill out there for lottery. So I think we ought to take pay attention to that over the next months. Thank you.
Are you, Ford, are you, um, uh, suggesting a particular action that we should take? Because if you want to really?
You really want to have a, know about it. Steve Sherrick, who most, some of the people, uh, Minuteman are very familiar with. He is with the Executive Director of MAVA. And he is somebody that you should have contact with. And he'd be delighted to have contact with you, uh, have contact with him and, and he would be able to help. It might even be a good idea to have him come to a school committee meeting.
Well, that's what I was about to suggest. If he would be willing to come into a meeting in the near future and give us suggestions on how we can help with that issue, I'd be very happy to hear it.
Steve would be good. And, and I can't remember his name. I do have Madame Charlene. The, the, um, they have a a lawyer and advocate on this issue who you mentioned and his name is.
His name is Anthony Abdallahad, I think.
Yes.
From Ventry Associates.
And Anthony might be a very good person to come in. Steve would probably bring him in. Um, he's very well spoken and he handled, he helped us a lot up in Beacon Hill.
Oh, man. Then Ford, I'll put you, I'll put you in charge, perhaps working with Charlene to arrange for whoever should come in to talk to us on it to do so. Along with Kevin, of course, as, uh, as is reasonable.
If I might just, um, add a little bit more here. Some of the Voc Tech schools regarding capacity issues, they're leasing space to expand uh, space to allow for, you know, additional students. And another kind of an interesting concept was Blackstone Valley. Uh, Blackstone Valley is not a Voc Tech school regular education. However, they have a consortium of ten or eleven schools. And they've started, um, offering Voc Tech education or Voc Tech education-like programs. It's not going to be to the same extent as schools like Minuteman, obviously. Um, but they do have some certifications like OSHA and Manufacturing One and Two. And what they're doing is they're combining resources of these ten or eleven schools to allow for, you know, wherever one school has the special equipment for a particular subject, they'll have the students from those ten schools that sign up for the program, go to that school. Classes are on weekends and evenings. And, uh, the students appear to be responsible for their own, um, maybe their parents are responsible for their own, um, transportation. Uh, but they have created this consortium to kind of meet the needs of, um, students who want certain programs and are not able to get in. So, um, I'm not advocating that for regular schools to get into the Voc Tech business, but what my thought was that perhaps there could be some sort of collaboration within the Voc Tech system. And I don't even know, perhaps it already takes place, but, um, so I may be speaking out of turn, but I know that Nancy, I don't know how to pronounce her last name. Is it Paul or Howell? Mentioned some collaborations with other schools with the MTI program. And I don't know if Minuteman does that in the high school program, if there's even opportunities for that. Just throwing it out there.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, Charlene. An interesting and useful report. Maybe more of us will attend the conference next year. Very good. Moving on. Uh, Katie Bouchard, principals report. Starting with the open house.
Yep. Um, so at this time, I'd like to invite Erin Norson, um, present to us about some admissions and marketing updates.
I am here. Uh, great. We're unmuted. So our open house was held on November nineteenth, Sunday. From ten to one, we had, uh, about three hundred families who had registered. More came, but that's who registered online pre, prior to coming. Um, we had a thousand people coming through the door. So even if a family registered um, as one family, they had multiple people. So it was very busy. It was a really great day. I was able to hear and stay near the door to answer questions as people were leaving. A lot of great things I heard are listed over there, how incredible our students are, which we all know that. Um, how I'm beyond impressed everyone was with all of our teachers and instructors and how they knew the admissions process so well and how they were able to answer so many questions that families had. And then so many people said, can I come back and go to high school here? Can I have a redo? Um, which was so great to hear. And I know we all feel that way sometimes. Um, some improvements as we're always trying to get better. And this is my first year. So um, these are all events that were already established and I, you know, will hopefully by next year, put more of my spin on some things, but um, we're to move tables out of the Paul Revere Room where we have certain people set up, like our lead teachers, our, uh, you know, special education department, move them into the student union. This gives them more visibility. It's just a nicer space, more air, more movement. Um, and then to set up computers in the library. When I think we miss, you know, people miss the media center when they're walking around the open house. It is such a beautiful part of our school. Um, so if we can set computers up there so people can apply while they're here, um, we want to really capture that person when they're in the door. Um, and past life and what I used to do kind of tells me, get the sale when you're there in the door. So I'm trying to really motivate people to complete the process while they're here. Um, and then our application numbers as of yesterday, and that is the eleventh. Um, we have for this class, a total of ninety-six completed applications. However, a hundred and seventy-three people have requested an application. So it's a little bit of a different system. Um, we have a whole new system for our applications this year, which we are learning and building without, um, hiccups. However, we do have a plan to kind of pick up things as we are just finished up a tour. And during our tour, we had two applications come through. So, you know, we're constantly updating. The numbers are constantly being finished and as people understand this new system. But, um, from a digital perspective, we'll be implementing some reminders to the middle school parents to apply or finish their process. We'll be doing that by tomorrow. We're going to send out an email blast. Um, this is something we did for our family information night. People saw this had a very good high open rate of sixty-five percent of the thirty-three hundred people that we sent the email to, sixty-five percent opened the email. So that's a very high rate for opening. So we're going to try that again and see, get people in there and finish up. Um, our new system is called Blackbaud and we can send notes directly in the system. So we're going to start doing that. Again, starting by the end of this week, we can set another reminder again two weeks later. Um, from a direct mail point of view, we're going to send our applied, you know, times running out, apply postcard, which we generally do. Going to push the date up a little bit, send it right after the new year. And then we're going to send that again. So, you know, I've managed to save some budget so we can go ahead and send out another reminder for our in-district families the end of the month. So closer to that time, we can also remind them there's another tour coming up. Um, we did have a lot of people coming through today for the tour, which was wonderful. Uh, but let's, you know, we want to try and finish the process. And then from a social POV, we are going to post in some community groups that we have access to uh, from a local point of view. And then we're going to also do some targeted Facebook and Instagram ads for particular communities. And as you say, I have all the timing there, just so you can see how we'll be, you know, really hitting this pretty hard. And then from a personalized outreach, we're going to start calling families who had um, already started the application, just see where they're stuck in the process, kind of chalk them through it. And then today, what we did, thankfully, Mr. O'Conners was able to help get us an iPad so that people could start the application process on the way out. So as we ended our tours today, we encourage people to sign up to start the process. So we could get them the application as they, you know, by the time they got home. So uh, that seemed to work pretty well. People were pretty excited. We had the student ambassadors directing people that way. Um, and so it seemed to be a new strategy. I just wanted to try it. So that was the first time, but it, it was working. So. That's where I'm at.
Um, any questions for Erin?
Charlene.
I'm muted. Um, is the application digital or is it just, um, you have to print it? Because when we looked online, it seemed to only have an inquiry form, but not an application form.
Yes. So. That's the problem. So there is an inquiry form you fill out. You should have received an email from us with your application digitally. Some of that is going to spam. Also, just to make a note that, um, any Gmail, Yahoo, and there's two other email platforms that have instituted some new augmentation um, to process for us to get through that, you know, wall to get to you. So it may have gone to either junk or spam. We can check on any of that, but you should have gotten it digitally in an email within twenty-four hours of filling out the inquiry.
Okay. Can you just print out the thing, fill it in and scan and email it back?
Uh, you certainly could, and we could put that into the system then. Um, you know, we would hope for everything. We did get someone else who had done that as well. Um, so, you know, we would hope that we could work on the digital side of things, but, uh, that has been a little bit of a hiccup for us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The comment, you may want to, um, randomly call some of these families who did an inquiry in the near future to find out if this going to spam is a, a general thing that's actually having a, a significant impact on completed applications. So it could be, you know, it could be that it's just a few or it could be a major problem that we just don't see yet. So you might want to do an investigation or randomly call a few of these people.
Definitely. We're starting that as soon as possible. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Solan. Um, and it's something that I've started to look into to see how we can break through that wall. Um, and I am taking a webinar next week on how to, you know, be able to work around that with your email process. So working, uh, I'm taking a webinar through constant contact on that. So it is something that I'm you actively trying to figure out. And, but yes, I will reach out to some families. Thank you.
Hey, very good. Um, Secretary of the Navy visit. Who's in charge of that?
Yep. Uh, so right before that, we just have one transition slide here tying in some marketing. Um, this is one. Um, so this is a winter wonderland event. Uh, so I just wanted to let everyone know that this is happening on January twentieth. Uh, it's from nine AM to eleven-thirty. Uh, it's going to be an event that is geared towards families with young children. Um, we're also partnering with the MPA, um, in order to coordinate this event. Um, the goal is also to raise some money for funds for our senior scholarships. Um, at the event, we hope to have a lot of children's activities, uh, such as arts and crafts, some raffles, some cookie decorating, some pop-up sales. At the event, we hope to have a lot of children's activities, such as arts and crafts, and raffles, and cookie decorating, some pop-up sales. Some art sales, some animal encounters, music and much more, just a really fun festive, you know, event for families. And also to just market to people who might be interested in learning more about Minuteman. We found that we do a really good job hitting our middle school students, but sometimes by middle school, they're already. You know, have it in their head where they want to go to high school, so we want to try to gear to some events towards students that are even younger. So hopefully this will hit some of our elementary school students who might be looking at Minuteman in the future. We'll have more information coming soon, we'll also have more information about tickets as well. So any quick questions on the Winter Wonderland before we go to the Secretary of the Navy visit?
Yes, I do have an important question, since this is a Winter Wonderland, you guarantee snow by January twentieth?
I'm okay with that deal as long as we don't have snow days. And then, as many of you know, we had the Secretary of the Navy visit with us on this past Friday, December eighth. He was anticipated to come from about eight forty-five to ten, he was able to. Stay till about ten thirty, his schedule consisted of a welcome, we were outside at the flagpole greeting him, some of the staff and students. Which was great, then we had a meet and greet in the restaurants, or you could show them the restaurant, he has our culinary students. And a whole bunch of other student reps go down to the restaurant to meet him. We had a tour of some of our programs, specifically advanced manufacturing, welding, robotics, engineering. And then we were able to bring him to the theater. He's a very passionate speaker, he's a great speaker, he really connected with our kids, big supportive career in technical education. His whole visit, it was super student focused, which we loved, you know, he really wanted to hear from the kids, he just kept taking. They had to do the slow gradual creep. Stage to which he still took more questions, and then eventually he finished. And it was just a great day for Minuteman, it was a great day to have him there, really enjoyed his visit. So you know, we'd love to do even more stuff like this, but it's just great to show our school to someone who has such, you know, great stature out there as well. Any questions on the Secretary of the Navy visit?
Ford.
Yeah, a couple of things came to mind, first and foremost. The organization that the school had put together, and Katie, I'll give her the leadership on this, but she may. Give it to a lot of other people, it was amazing, from the time he arrived all the way through the time he left. Minuteman did an absolutely exceptional job of organizing it, moving it along, and he's a hard person to move along. Because he gets engaged with kids and he doesn't want to move along. I gather, somebody told me he was an hour late to his appointment after this. Because he was so engaged with school, but Katie, Minuteman should be absolutely proud of the way you put that on, the way it was handled. It was a professional job from beginning to end, and. For me who attended it, and you'll probably hear from the other school community members who attended, just exceptional. So congratulations to Minuteman and the entire staff, well done. Secondly, he did give a speech, talk in the auditorium, which was, I thought, extremely inspirational. Excellently done, and I just want to mention a few points. First of all, his mother and father immigrated from Cuba. Came here and they didn't speak English, and they didn't have any money, and they raised their children, and he was one of them, I can't remember how many, but. He ended up going to high school at a vocational school. And that message to our kids was great, because he started, is starting his life in an education career. The same way all of our students are in a vocational school. They have, because he also earned the right to go to Annapolis, United States Naval Academy. And he ended up getting two degrees after that, and all of them were paid by the Navy. Another great message for people that you don't have to have a lot of money to get a great education. If you can, if you go into the service, and I thought that was exceptional. The way he engaged with students. He would go up to a student and look them in the eye, spend time with them, ask them what they were, what they were studying, and let's say they were a plumber. He always had the rhetoric, the Navy needs good plumbers. And it was a bit of a recruiting, I think there were five recruiters around marine and navy personnel. But beyond that, I think he told them, told me at the same time. That the Navy can be a great career, and a great way to extend your Minuteman, your Minuteman training. So that's really what had me left me, I was fortunate enough to go to the football game on Saturday, and I will tell you. I only saw him from afar, very far, but there was a big screen, so I could see him up closely. He was the same way on the field, he was very engaging with players and people he met with. And what was nice is, is one of the things he did at Minuteman is, is he would get, have a group of students to say. If you'd like to join the Navy right now, I can swear you in. Well, I saw him swear in people on the field, they had, they selected a group of. Of individuals who went into the Navy at the game, and I had them getting on a bus and driving up to the Great Lakes to go to boot camp, but. Exceptional day, absolutely exceptional, thank you.
You're on mute, Jeff.
Sharon.
All right, so I will, I mean, I echo everything that Ford said, but Katie, could you share with people the gifts that he left with? Specifically the ones that were created by the students, because they were just amazing. And I, I just think the school did such an incredible job, but I agree that the, he was just so engaging with the students and like. You know, they, they were very proud to be sharing what they're working on, but I think some of the presents that he left with were remarkable.
Yeah, he received from Minuteman Technical Institute, he had pretty much an honorary degree from the electrical program. Because his background was electrical engineering, he also got a stole that he put on around his neck from MTI, which is great. The students in advanced manufacturing made him one of those gold coins that had the Minuteman emblem on one side. That they designed the backside that had the US Navy emblem on the other side. And then we also had one of our teachers in engineering was able to make him off of our laser cutter. It was actually a cutout, it was on wood, it was kind of burned in a picture of the ship that he was on. For quite a while as one of his kind of Navy trips, which was really cool, so it was a replica of the ship that he was very familiar with. So it was awesome, and just in the pictures, for those of you who weren't there, the picture with the go-kart, the two students, that's actually. One of the senior projects, so those two students designed and built so far, that's their go-kart, it doesn't have the roll cage on it yet. But as you can see, it's pretty cool, he wanted to hire them on the spot pretty much to design a ship for him, for the Navy. So it's pretty cool to, for him to see what our students could accomplish, and again, I just echo what everyone else said, it was an amazing team effort. You know, for his visit, you know, the staff, the students, they're all wonderful, everyone just said, how can we help, what can we do? And everyone just did a great job that day.
And Katie, I would also just add that it wasn't just him that was really impressed with our school, but a lot of the people that were kind of part of his entourage. Were, would make comments like, this is an amazing school, wow, this is amazing, so it was really cool to hear. Kind of the people on the fringes also making comments about just how wonderful the school was and what a great job the kids had done and the teachers.
And the other comments. Alice.
He also said he would like to go back to school at Minuteman.
Fortunately, that opportunity is not legal.
Alice, Alice, you made a statement to me, which I thought was very good, how inspirational what he had to say. And you had a recommendation for the future at Minuteman, if you can remember, you're on mute.
It's just an idea that I was thinking about when I was watching how interested the kids were, it's definitely was an inspirational speaker, there are. Few speakers who are that inspirational, but it's such a tough time for kids. And I just felt like, you know, if we could somehow find a way to have more. Opportunities for them just to listen to people talk about things that are all great, and here are some great things you can do, and. I mean, even just getting them together and, and having them listen to someone like that for twenty minutes is. Is a very valuable thing to sort of counteract all the non-stop negativity that goes on, it's, I just. I feel bad for the kids right now, so that's, that's what I was thinking about.
Very good. We move on. From inspiration to finance, Steve Ledoux Finance Report, you'll find this inspirational too.
I don't know, that's, you've really got the pressure on me now, Mr. Chair. The Finance Committee met last Monday, the fourth. We had kind of a packed agenda, but we really didn't get to some of our items, because our main focus obviously is FY twenty-five budget. We'll be meeting again next Monday to further review, and just to kind of recap. Because I think I reported this at the last school committee meeting, we got our first preliminary look at the budget. Kind of towards the end of November, and that budget was based on kind of departmental requests, and. The departmental requests have included both operational and capital, a total of about thirty-two point seven million dollars. Which would, which equates to about a seven point eight percent increase over FY twenty-four. And that would require a five point five seven increase in assessments to our member towns. So in the interim between that meeting, the end of November and December fourth. Interim Superintendent started working on the budget, and we're very, very pleased and impressed as a committee. As to the work that Kevin has done so far on this. So after, after initial review by, by the interim superintendent. The budget, his, his review of the budget thus far is thirty-one point nine million dollars, which is less obviously than thirty-two point seven. And the, and the operational and capital requests equate to a five point two eight percent request increase, excuse me. And total town assessments equal two point five percent increase. And a lot of that relates to kind of the, I think we explained this at the last meeting, that we had a windfall. Last year of about eight hundred thousand dollars in, in chapter seventy-eight, which. Obviously, we, we level funded it for this year, so there's an eight hundred thousand dollar swing between FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. Now, we're meeting again next, next Monday evening, and. The committee has, has given the interim superintendent a little more direction, we would like to see the operational and capital. Requests under five percent, so I, I know Kevin is working on that and will be reviewing that. We did include in, in your packet kind of a timetable, because, you know, as we already know. January is going to be a busy year, a busy month in terms of the superintendency search, but you know, it's also budget time, so. The timetable is there, we'll be meeting again on December, on January eighth, to hopefully. See the final version of the budget and, and devote a recommendation, then on the sixteenth of January. The school committee will see that, see that, see that document. And then we are slated on January twenty-fifth to hold the public hearing on the budget. And, and then vote the recommended budget so that we can get our assessments out to the member, out to the member communities. So it, it's got to be a busy time, you know, very, I'm very happy with the progress we've made in just a short period of time, and. You know, Kevin's an old hand at budgeting, so you know, we're in good hands in, in regard to that, but. You know, hopefully on next Monday, we'll see some, some further good news, and then. When we meet again in January, you will, you will see the final, the final recommended budget. And I think that pretty much summarizes that, Mr. Chair.
Alice.
I know that the operating capital percentage increase is often completely different than the assessment increase. I'm sorry, I didn't understand, what is the assessment looking like?
Well, it's a two point five percent increase, obviously, it depends on the community and depends on the, you know, enrollment. But a, as it stands, what was presented to us last week was a two point four five percent assessment increase.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, some people would go up, some people would go down, so that's the average.
Other questions? Obviously, a lot more to come. But thank you, Steve, I think that we have two other items on the finance report.
Right, and I'll defer to the interim superintendent for those two items.
Yes, thank you, Steve, we have two reports, we have District Treasurer Laurie Elliott has come in from time to time. Laurie's been with the district. For quite a while, I'd say maybe eight years anyway, so. She's been our district treasurer, she's one of the folks that you don't see behind the scenes that works closely. With the business office, and is sort of the checks and balance for the business office and reports to the school committee. On, on, on. As far as her organizational responsibilities go, so I just asked Laurie to come in, is it a number of new. Committee members that haven't met her, and just briefly discuss her role in the district and, and. And what part she plays, and just give a committee a brief update on what's. For what her activities are as district treasurer, and then following Laurie's report, we'll, we'll make a recommendation on a assistant district treasurer. Which we found a need for, as basically Laurie did not have any. A formal backup co-signer on the account, so could act in, in her absence. And we found that to be a critical need, the school committee supported that, so we have a candidate we're excited to bring forward tonight to, for you to meet, but. We'll start first with Laurie.
Okay, great, thank you, Kevin, and thank you to the school committee for this opportunity to speak. I've been, actually, I've been Minuteman's treasurer, part-time treasurer now for ten years. And as treasurer, I manage the school's bank accounts with Eastern Bank, the Mass Municipal Depository Trust, which is an arm of the State Treasurer's Office. Cambridge Savings Bank, Unibank, and Vanguard where the school's OPEB trust funds are held. My daily responsibilities include working with the business office, making all weekly deposits. And initiating transfers to fund school warrants and payrolls, and entering those transfers onto the general ledger. As treasurer, I maintain the school's cashbook, reconciling all bank accounts to the banking module and the school's accounting software in fin and visions on a monthly basis. I work directly with the business office team on any items that need to be posted, such as interest income, credit card receipts. And wires that go directly into the school's bank, bank accounts. I manage employee online access to all school bank accounts, and I monitor the activity daily. Receipts have been steady into the various bank account, assessments to communities are invoiced to the communities and are deposited or wired. Depending upon the preference of each community into the main Eastern Bank depository account. State aid and grants are wired into the MMDT investment account. The MMDT is the banking vehicle used by the state of Massachusetts to distribute local aid and all grant funds. Monies from this account are then transferred over to Eastern Bank to fund operations as needed. And just as a note, the school has adequate cash reserves on hand to handle all of our cash flow needs. Our account with Unibank is used to segregate bond proceeds from operating funds. When a school building warrant needs to be paid, funds are transferred from Unibank to Eastern Bank accounts. Accounts payable checking account, I'm sure everyone is aware of the collapse of First Republic Bank and the effect that had on the banking industry. Due to that failure, I initiated a change to our bank holdings with a nightly automatic sweep out of our accounts. Eastern Bank places those funds in increments under the FDIC limit in various institutions. And it's a way to make sure that our funds are safe and secure, and risk is spread over multiple institutions instead of just one. In addition, the interest rate is higher with this process, which is an added bonus, and I actually initiated the same change at the Great Lawrence Sanitary District. For where I work full-time for fund security. I guess I would say the most challenging account to manage is the Vanguard OPEB account. Investing at this level is a specialized area of finance. As I reported last year, a number of years ago, the school committee voted to have the treasurer manage the school's OPEB funds and directed the balance in the MMDT bond portfolio to be transferred to Vanguard Brokerage Services, and the funds were transferred in twenty nineteen into the index funds designated by the committee. And the treasurer, myself, I follow the investment policy. The asset allocation has a target of seventy percent stock of thirty percent bonds and equivalents as directed by the school committee, and I move the money around periodically to make sure that we that if I follow the directive of the school committee. And I guess that would be my report. I do know next on the agenda, we have the committee is set to consider the addition of an assistant treasurer. This person would act in my stead and perform basic services for the business office staff if needed. The most important function would be the ability to transfer funds from our main depository to our payroll and to fund our warrants. This would occur if, for any reason, I was unable to perform that critical function. Someone has to be able to do that. The assistant treasurer would serve primarily as just as my backup, and I train that individual and provide ongoing oversight. And this, I would offer this as my report to the school committee if anybody has any questions.
Questions or comments, school committee members? Laurie, is there anything else that we should be doing with respect to managing our funds that are, we are being, in your view, suboptimal?
The only, the only account that I have, I've ever had any issue with, I feel, is the OPEB account, where I think we could do better if that was with with Pritt, with the state funding.
Right. I think Steve has a response to that.
Yeah, I think, I think that, I think it would do better. That's, that's, you have professional money managers, managers. They handle the, your retirement, our retirement system, Minuteman Retirement System is with them, the whole state of Massachusetts, retirement system monies with them. And I think that, you know, they have professional money managers that I think would do a really, they do a really great job for your retirement system. So. But otherwise, the, like I said, the other change that I made was the sweep account to make sure that everything was secure. I already, that's already been done.
Yeah. Steve?
Yeah, and I think I mentioned this at, at the last school committee meeting. We will be going out with an RFP for, for manager for the OPEB funds as soon as we get through the budget process. I know Nikki's going to be working on that. So yeah, I mean, we recognize the need to, to have some extra management on OPEB. So our, we'll be going out.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Now, the questions for Laurie? Very good, Kevin. One more item.
Yes, I'm pleased to present to you Priya Kabari. When we advertised, we received, this is, again, Laurie has a part-time position and the assistant treasurer is just filling in when the part-time treasurer can't fill in. So it is a very, it is from an involvement level. I don't see a lot of day-to-day activity like Laurie has, but in her absence, we do need somebody who's capable to step in and do, do so. Laurie and I interviewed Priya. And we were very impressed with her qualifications and knowledge. She, her resume is attached. She even had, did a stint at the PGSE there for a time. So she's familiar with the business and I, I'd just like to present to you, Priya, perhaps just some opening comments about your, your, your background and your, your interest in the position, please.
Thank you so much, Kevin and Laurie, for the opportunity and school committee for taking your time to visit me. I'm really passionate with what I do. I had an educational background, like working as an auditor with the Department of Education. Then I moved to healthcare industry as a, like, you know, grants manager. So my passion is what I am. And on part-time basis, I help a lot of not-profit, not-for-profit organizations to set up their finances, to set up their internal control policies and procedures. And when I saw, when I came across with this opportunity, I'm living in Lexington. I have served Lexington School as a treasurer for one term. So I said, like, what else can be better to serve another opportunity to be a Lexington resident to another, like, you know, school district? Not school district, but the school. So that was my, like, you know, that took my, certainly my passion about it. And I I reached out for this opportunity. I'm glad that Kevin and Laurie found my candidate very interesting. And I, I, I promise to all, like, you know, everybody here that you won't be, and even Kevin and Laurie won't be disappointed with, by having me. I'm, I'll bring, like, you know, best knowledge, skill sets, and my personal ability to the table to serve this server, our school committee and school to progress and towards achieving their goals. So I'm glad to be on board. Part of the team as well. Thank you.
Kevin, the question I'm going to ask before we move on to a possible vote is one thing that's not mentioned in the, the vote is how does the compensation for this position work? Refresh our memory on this.
Um, let's see. Nikki, do you remember? I, I think it's an annual stipend of, was it four thousand a year? Nikki, do you recall?
I believe it was a stipend of two thousand.
Two thousand.
So an annual stipend of two thousand dollars. Yeah, okay. Do you have any other comments, Kevin, before I ask school committee members for their questions, if any?
No, we're, we're, we're very pleased to have Priya on board, some of her qualifications and and as you can tell, her, her passion for working in, in this environment. I think we're really lucky to bring her on board. And I highly recommend highly recommend the candidacy for this.
And let's, let's put the motion on the table, and then we'll have some more comments. Who would like to put the motion on the table? Alice?
So.
Second, second.
Second. Okay. Any other questions or comments? My comment is it's about time we added in a assistant treasurer back into the mix. That's my major comment here. No further questions or comments? Bring in the motion to vote. Pam?
I'm North Saxon, yes.
Sarah Matzky Arlington, yes.
Erica OZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ward Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Karen Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Al Stulven Stowe, yes.
Okay, so Priya, welcome. And thank you very much for your assistance.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Is that the end of the finance report, Steve?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, we're gonna have a lot longer finance reports coming up. I'm very excited. And now we have a if you look at item ten in our agenda, which is the interim superintendent's report, you will see a really astonishing number of critical and interesting reports. Far more than we would normally get in, in a meeting. So there's going to be a lot of information presented today. Some of it is more short-term. Much of it is really long-term, things that we're going to see many times in the future over months or years. So onward.
Yes, thank you very much. We're going to talk about the, the academy model. That's mentioned earlier. We do have a few school, school committee members that have been, been on the committee for less than a year. And it's been, it's been a model we've been working with for a number of years. And I just would like Katie and Anthony to go through their presentation on to give the, the school committee update on, on the academy model. So Katie, would you mind starting the presentation?
Yep, thanks. So this is an overview of the academy model that we have at Minuteman. So it's just some background information of how did we get here? So approximately fifteen years ago, when Minuteman started to look at our endeavor to build a new building, we wanted to design it around an academy model. So in two thousand and fourteen, Minuteman formed what we called the Academy Development Team. It was a team of about twenty people, consisting of teachers, administrators, and we're going to explore existing academy models. And part of that process had us going on some trips. So members of the Academy Development Team, we went to conferences in both Nashville, Tennessee, and also Louisville, Kentucky. As some of you might know, Nashville has their school system set up in the academy model. So it was really cool to go down there and kind of see what they were doing and what we took away from that. You know, what we wanted to use and what we wanted to keep, what we're currently doing at Minuteman at the time. The Academy Development Team, then we all came together after these trips. We shared some of our findings, and we decided that we wanted to make a list of kind of the most important things that we saw on our trips and what we wanted to implement at Minuteman. So what we did was we created some buckets of work that were used to fuel our summer work that year with our staff team. And that's basically what we use to create the foundation of Minuteman's academy model. Some of the vision for our academy model is that we wanted to promote time for collaboration, professional development, create some opportunities for our staff to lead. With our professional development time, we wanted to make sure that we have time to evaluate student work, look at interdisciplinary projects, and also some time to focus on some data. We've implemented SRI protocols, which was some, as they call it, Critical Friends. You look at student data, you work in teaching teams and kind of establish norms for meetings and run through different protocols. We've worked to strengthen the relationships within the school. We've worked to create more integration opportunities. We use Rubicon Atlas, which is our online curriculum mapping system for both our vocational and academic courses. So that throughout the school, you can see what any class is doing at any time, based on the units and their scope and sequence that we have documented. And then also, we wanted to modify and, and improve our senior projects and our portfolios, which we've been doing for the past couple of years, just to increase some more project-based learning, some celebrations of students' work. So that's kind of what our vision was for the academy model moving forward and where we are now. Some of the work of the Academy Development Team. So as I mentioned, we've done at Rubicon Atlas, which is our curriculum mapping portfolios, senior projects, lead certification is the certification that we received through the new building that just says we're meeting a certain standard for like energy efficient, you know, recycling, all that type of stuff in terms of teaching that type of curriculum within our science departments where a lot of it is housed. We've been revamping our program of studies. We've implemented an SST meeting, which is student support teams. We have a lot of integration going on, which we've always done. Our PLCs are professional learning communities as well. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Anthony Giarello, who's going to talk about where we are now.
Thanks, Katie. So, you know, as we sat down and created this presentation and we're reviewing where we've gone and where we are right now with the academy model, what we really realized is that so much of the planning process and the work of the Academy Development Team is institutionalized within the Minuteman community and is really embedded in our culture. And integration projects are a big part of that. So some of these are really big type projects that include multiple academic and career technical education areas. So World Bee Day, which we did several years in a row, incorporated literally every career technical education area as well as academic areas. And just to give you guys a sense of what this looks like, you know, horticulture, obvious, not obviously, but horticulture, you know, keeps bees, they harvest the raw honey with culinary arts, environmental study, science, excuse me, you know, studies, pollerty collapse disorder, biotech is looking at testing the beehives for antimicrobial properties, you know, carpentry is building the beehives. Electrical wiring and plumbing students are working on a solar-powered water bubbler for for the beehive, you know, health assisting is looking at how EpiPen's and Anaphylaxis. It goes on and on. In the core academic classes, you would see things like, you know, learning about different plants and poetry that's inspired by that and analyzing poetry that's related to bees. Math, looking at the decline of honeybee hives in the algebra classes. Science, learning about specific types of bees. Phys ed, kind of doing like walks throughout the campus where they've learned about different pollinators that we have on our campus. So really, just everyone coming together around integration. There are other programs, you know, excuse me, there are other integration projects like our heart health demonstration that brought together health, cosmetology, early ed, culinary, and biotech. So you might have, you know, you're getting your blood pressure taken by health assisting. Cosmetology is taking you through different ways to relax, right? So the, the pampering that goes on there, early ed, you're learning about it. Culinary is like heart healthy meals and such. So just kind of bringing those things together. And you can see some other projects here listed as well. And if Katie, if you could move to the next slide. So again, you know, integration is, you know, really part of who we are now, and we continue to grow that. As Katie mentioned, all of our curriculum has been mapped. So the scope and sequence for all academic and CTE areas are in Rubicon Atlas. Why this is really important? It's always important to have your curriculum mapped out. But it's, it's particularly important for integration so that if I'm teaching a certain concept in math, I can look up any CTE area that might also be, have that in there and then be able to collaborate with my colleague on it. So I might be the math teacher working on angles, and I can go into cosmetology, and we talk about how the different angles that we cut hair at, right? So obviously, you can go into carpentry, do something similar. So there's all these different opportunities for teachers. And by housing the curriculum and the keyword searches in Rubicon Atlas, that makes that process a lot simpler. We have professional time dedicated to integration projects that allows our teachers, this is the autonomy, to be really creative and collaborate with one another. As Katie talked about before, we have our student support team that is there to have students refer to them. And then they'll discuss the needs of those students and different interventions that will benefit them and get them to where they need to be. You saw it in the Secretary of the Navy's visit, but you know, there's so many examples of these senior projects, which are really the capstone of what all of our students strive for. We, when, when I was in admissions, we were talking about it to eighth graders about these remarkable projects that students do. You saw obviously, the go-kart that an engineering and a welding student are working on together. Some of these are older ones here where there was a fire pit that a welding student put together, a carpentry student built a library out of an old refrigerator for our early ed department. But what's also cool about this in terms of the integration of academics and career technical education is there's a research component that's conducted here as well, as well as just project management. So these are skills that transcend any career technical education area or academic area. They're found in all of these things. Our digital portfolio, so all students have portfolios of their academic and career technical education experience. Those are at every grade level. I mean, a lot of schools that I've worked at before that have portfolios, you typically have a senior portfolio. But we have students working on these, reflecting on their work and, and their growth over their entire time here at Minuteman. I talked about, we talked about those big integration projects, but they come in all sizes. I was just in a Spanish class that had early ed in there, teaching them about language development and young students. And those Spanish students were then going to be doing lessons with the early education students. I was in a collaboration between Mr. Marshall, who's our lead science teacher and teaches a class called Applied Physics. And he was in the plumbing shop, but it was students in carpentry, plumbing, electrical, and welding. And he was doing a lesson on force, but it was related to the code around the size of the hole that you can drill into Joyce. And they were looking at like, why those codes existed and what the science was behind it. So you have the big projects like World Bee Day, and you have all these smaller integrations to show students, you know, the importance of what they're learning in their core academic classes and how it applies to the work they're doing in their career areas. And then one thing that I've noticed in my four years here at Minuteman is that the relationships both between colleagues, between students and their teachers, and between the students is, you know, probably the strongest part about our entire school is the relationships that are built between all of these folks. And I think the, the academy model really supports those things. So again, it's, it's, it's really, the academy model is, is who we are. So all we're, what we do often now, and I know Katie will touch on this, but is we just tweak and make things better. we just tweak and make things better. It's not like starting starting something new. It's really just improving upon what we already have.
Great. So just some obstacles, other components of academy models. So Minuteman has implemented our academy model, you know, and every year we work on enhancing it and just improving it. Some other components of academy models and all of them are different depending on the school. So you know, one of the reasons or one of the ideas behind some academy models are cohorts. And it's really challenging for Minuteman to schedule student cohorts, meaning that the same group of students pretty much stay together all day. They take a lot of their same classes together and they're in their same major together. And some of the hurdles to that are that we have the nineteen current technical majors, which consists of five pathways and then two academies as well. And then we have various levels of courses. So we have dual enrollment, we have AP, we have honors, we have CP one and CP two. So we have all these different level classes. And we do have a relatively small student body and academic teaching staff when you think about our makeup of the school. So you know, we're not a school that has, you know, seven history teachers and we have, you know, seven science teachers. So some of our departments are smaller, which would make it very challenging to schedule cohorts. Some of the space limitations, you know, just within our building, as many of you know, we're managing our success in terms of enrollment. We have a technology office, innovation lab, known as our TOIL area, and also a project-based learning lab, which is known as our PLB room. They're not available right now because they're being used as classroom space. We also have seventy-five percent of our students, which is grades nine, ten and twelve, that are in academic classes A and B during the ten, twelve academic week. So we're definitely a little bit squeezed on class size as well. You know, we do struggle to find common planning time. We are able to do it at least once a month where we have some PP time, but it's not always dedicated towards common planning time. So right now we have about common planning time, about one every quarter. So we have about four times a year. But you know, I think every school just feels some time restraint of, you know, we need more hours in the day to accomplish everything that we want. So again, it's not that Minuteman hasn't implemented an academy model. It's we've implemented an academy model that works for our school and works for our size of the student enrollment in our, our teaching staff right now. But we do try to continue to improve it, you know, every year. So I just wanted to open up the questions if anybody has any questions on our academy model.
Okay, questions? Erica.
Hi, thank thank you for that very thorough presentation. I just had a question. You mentioned Rubicon Atlas. Is that something that parents would have access to? Or is that just used by the teachers?
No, it's just an internal system that we use. All of our teachers are able to see it.
Other questions?
And then you mentioned, yeah, I just have one more question. For you mentioned cohort. What does that mean exactly?
So some schools that have academy models, they have large enough teaching staffs that they could have the same group of kids share a lot of the same teachers. So this, this class would kind of transition from English to history to science and those kids would share the same teachers. So like those teachers could have the same block off and they could have student data meetings and they could say, you know, hey, today we're going to talk about Anthony. Anthony's been struggling in my science class and the math teacher will chirp in, oh no, Anthony's been doing great math class. You gotta talk to him about race cars. If you get Anthony talking about race cars, he's gonna be much better in science. Or, you know, have you tried this technique yet? Have you reached out to his parents? So we just don't have a large enough staffing to be able to keep the students together to meet all of the needs that they have to get them to meet the graduation requirements.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. Sure.
Alice.
I just wanted to say that as usual, Minuteman is leading the way. You've been doing this for fourteen years and I'm just starting to hear other local schools talking about how they're going to have an academy model. So it's like three or four generations of students have gone through their school and now they're going to have an academy model. I just have over the years, watched Minuteman change how everyone's doing education in this part of Massachusetts and it's just happening again. Thank you.
I think Ford had his hand up. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is. It's interesting. I was sitting here listening and first of all, Katie, listen to the history. Some of us remember well the history that you all went through with the academy model and Dr. McQuillan sort of leading the way and helping you all get there and it's good. What I was puzzling, sitting about until you got to the last slide, that the building that we designed, does it work? You know, is it, does it help facilitate the academy model? Because that was the whole goal to do that. I understand the problems with the enrollment issues. Actually, a larger enrollment issue than the building was designed for. We've had the opportunity to walk around the school and, you know, I've seen a classroom in the middle of the corridor and I've seen other things which are you're making it work, but it's also disturbing. Overall, would you say that the design of the building was the right design to get to the academy model that we wanted? And then I guess I think to the future, how can we adapt the building or make additions to the campus and building that will help us really reach our goals?
Sure. I think if you think about the placement of our career and technical majors, that it was very well designed, you know, that student, the programs that share a lot of related curriculum are located next to each other. You know, we have advanced manufacturing right next to engineering, right next to robotics, right next to metal sound. So all those programs, they do a lot of integration. And you have, you know, all your traditional trades, you've got carpentry, welding, automotive, plumbing, all lined up next to each other. I think some of the challenges is just, you know, when the building was designed, I think we needed to put a little bit more kind of intentionality in thinking about the academic spaces and just how many classrooms would we need in order to accommodate our student body. So, you know, moving forward, I think it's just about right sizing the building in terms of students. And just making sure that we have the right amount of students so that we're adequately able to fit them all in there and kind of start utilizing the building a little bit more of how it was designed initially.
Thank you. That makes me feel a little better because I wasn't feeling better as we started off. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Darren.
Yeah, you know, Katie, you were talking about the relatively small student body and like the restrictions with some of the teaching staff and stuff as well. Like I know a lot of schools right now are still struggling post-COVID with being fully staffed. What's our staffing situation? Like, do we have a lot of openings or are we good?
We don't have a lot of current openings. That being said, you know, some of our class sizes, you know, academically are bigger. You know, it would be great if, you know, those were able to be taken down by a couple of students just because of the needs of our students. It's just we can provide more one-on-one individual attention, the smaller the class size, obviously.
And the same thing with CTE, those are all covered now. Cause I know, I think you had emailed about a new, one of the programs just got a new teacher, correct?
Yep, we just had some recent hires. We had a handful of recent hires just within the past two weeks. So we have all of our teaching positions filled right now.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, am I hearing correctly that there is no need for a major course correction here? That, that this model is well under control with the exception of the fact that we have more students than the school is designed for, or is there other things that we should and need to do that may have budgetary impact over a period of time?
I think a lot of it is looking at the schedule, you know, and a lot of that has to do with the student body of, you know, we have to offer so many classes, so many periods in order to get them all into the classes that they need. So I think if that seems to come under control, hopefully within the next couple of years, we'll have a better understanding of what else we need to do in order to continue to enhance our model. But, you know, I think we're in a good place. We have a lot of stuff that's really going right for the academy model. And I think it'll just keep to improving year after year.
Do you keep in touch with some of these other schools that have an academy model and see how their models are evolving over time? Would that be something that's useful to do? Maybe some field trips?
Certainly. I think one of the big things is a lot of the schools that we did visit or a lot of the schools that do have academy models, they don't necessarily do CTE the way that Massachusetts does CTE. So when you think about it, they are doing CTE, but it's like a block or two a day. So it's just not the same level of career and technical training. The students aren't leaving the same level of certifications. And our schedule is a lot more intricate just because we do the one week on, one week off. And we also do the math and English every morning. And yeah, that's not something we're looking to change because we've had such great success with the MCAS. So we want to obviously keep that as part of our claim to fame.
Okay, so how we implement this is somewhat unique, is that matches our unusual student body better. Okay, that's all I can point.
Jeff, the only thing I sort of, I think about, and you've heard me say this before. I think we also need to be thinking about, we have a great campus that may be acceptable to some campus expansion. And I think we have to consider how we can do that. Where it should be done, how it should be done effectively, which might help might help with space and increasing the campus as we go along.
And I'm looking forward to the capital planning subcommittees, short-term and long-term reports at some point. Which will hopefully cover some of that. Kevin?
Yes, just to piggyback on some of the comments, I think that a lot of what we tried to communicate today is, you know, is an awful lot of progress. As Anthony said, it's institutionalized and what the staff does. And, and, you know, we've been in the building, we've had challenges since we've been in the building with the COVID time period and, you know, managing our success. But I think we've had some conversations with the school committee about how that impacts our policy on admissions and space utilization. There are some long-term solutions that may be out there and we'll find, we'll have that discussion in terms of future funding opportunities when we review the budget. But I think over the short run, I think it's being managed in a way that's probably not ideal, but I think we're making it work. And I think that as we continue to do that over the next couple of years, as we look at it over a short-term basis, I think I think we'll be able to sustain it moving forward.
Any other questions on the report, the excellent report on the academy model? Very good. Kevin, move on.
Yes, we have, for items B and C, we have a couple of project updates on a couple of building projects that we're working on. Our Director of Operations, Michelle Ascendus, will cover those items. Michelle?
Hi, everyone. I want to say thank you for letting me come on and speak with you. I'm going to give you a couple of updates, one on the north building and then one on our Twenty Mill Street move. Right now with the north building, we're in the final stages of the closeout. We still have two outstanding punch list items that we're working with our house doctor engineer, as you could say, on them. We did have, when I did this, one closeout item, but that has been resolved. So we are looking for a substantial completion form. It was forwarded to the contractor and we're anticipated to close with SEVER this month. The IT fiber pole has been done in the building. And then the finished work by Minuteman students won't start until we get that substantial completion back from the contractor. So that's pretty much the update for, for the north building at the moment. We are actively working towards closing out this project and hoping that, you know, when it warms up a little bit more, we'll be able to get our students out there to finish everything else up. As for the Mill Street renovation, this is the renovation project that you had approved at your last school committee meeting. Just a couple of updates where obviously, as you can tell, we're in the midst of it here, but you know, I just wanted to give you guys a little view on the work that our students have been doing. Again, I want to shout out to construction tech, plumbing, electrical, horticulture and, you know, and the other various staff members that have helped in getting this project going and moving. We have put, went out for bid for our E-rate for the wifi. There will probably be a discussion further on making the wifi a more permanent expansion from our building, but that's something we're going to address probably in the summer months. We're having a fire protection system upgrade, so everything in there will be brand new. Our electrical updates, we're actually working with MassSave on and had a contractor came out last week to give us a overview of the different rebates that are available to us for our electrical needs in the building. Just in the picture that you can view, the first picture that you see is how it previously was. The second picture, although it doesn't look as good, obviously, is the expansion of the rooms. That's that one wall that we spoke of before that we were removing. We are installing a vapor barrier on this floor and then we have some animal-resistant flooring that we will be putting in this room here. And I just want to note that there is a second room of the size already in front of this that will be the main classroom learning area. And then this second room that you're seeing the renovation take place in will be more of the lab area for the animals. We're renovating our bathrooms. There's a couple of pictures as you can see in the bottom of your screen that are the bathrooms that are starting to be renovated by the plumbing and construction crew. The laundry area where you see the insulation in the bottom middle picture, that wall is going to be, that standing wall is going to be removed and that will be the dog washing area as well as a washer and dryer for the program. Can move on to the next. For exterior, we had a help from our maintenance and horticulture. And we repaired all the fencing around the property, so it's fully fenced in. We removed a back oning. We had the horticulture and maintenance together, cleaned up the grounds area around the property. The deck, as you can tell, was soft washed and the back of the roof was treated. The remaining of the roof in the exterior of the building will be done when the weather permits, probably around the springtime. And then also the exterior steps will be done in the springtime as well. We, oh, sorry, you can go on to the next slide. So the budget was thirty-five thousand. Thank you, Jeff. We currently are at twenty-six thousand, one fifty-six. I did write a grant, a mega safety grant for about five thousand dollars. The results on if I get the grant or not come back December twenty-second. But that grant is going to help us keep to our budget. But also it is for the security cameras on the outside of the property. And our security actually came in much higher than what we had anticipated. I know you're smiling, Jeff, because you knew that was coming. But, you know, in trying to counteract that increase in the budget, we wrote this grant. So we're hoping that it gets approved. This, the twenty-six thousand, one fifty-six at the moment is inclusive of the upgrades estimate for the electrical and the flooring. And our timeline was originally for a move-in in January, the early parts of January. But we are looking like the middle of February at the moment with some of the flooring and stuff not being installed until mid-January. We're hoping to do the move most likely during February vacation. I know that Katie and Sarah, the principal and the CTE director are working together with some notification to family to go out, the closer we get to the actual move date as well. That's all I have for you.
Right. Questions on the two building updates? Right. Questions on the two building updates? What's pretty good to me? Ford?
Um, just, Michelle, just a quick question about what I'm going to call commuting between uh this building and the school. Um, I'm a little familiar with it, but uh you might want to just talk about that.
Sure, there's um an actual path that leads from the back of our school, um the back of the main campus kind of directly to this um building. This was previously used as a shop area for our um 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 early childhood um shop, sorry. Couldn't think of it. Um, and which Katie could probably speak better to because she was the one that was um there about the process of getting students back and forth between the buildings. This is actually much closer now to the main building than it was previously, where the students used to have to walk across the entire football field area to get to the building. So um it's it's not something that we're um unfamiliar with. And I think we're probably going to proceed in the same manner that we did when it was the um early childhood shop. I don't know, Katie, you want to speak to a little bit more of that or?
Sure. Um, yeah, so as as Michelle noted, um, we used to have much further walk, uh because if you can imagine walking from the current uh football field uh to Mill Street, that was closer to the walk that we used to have. Uh, most days we would walk. It was just nice enough to get out, get some fresh air. On days of inclement weather, um we'd drive the students over, drop them off. Um, um, either we'd have the bus for the day or somebody would drive the bus back depending on the availability. Um, but it it worked. Uh, the worst-case scenario, we ran into a snake in the woods one day and that was pretty upsetting for some of our students, but we we got over that uh after a lot of screaming and uh we were good to go since then. So it works and it is actually nice to get outside and uh get some movement in your day.
And I just, I want to note too, um, you know, Ford, you talked about your, the the classrooms in the um middle of the hallway, um and we talked about the academy modeling and needing space um for our students. This does um allow us to put um students in educational spaces that's conducive to their learning. Um, and helps us move in that direction to have everyone in a space that uh works for them as well.
Michelle, great job. I mean, I, that's uh, that helps. Thanks.
Other questions regarding the building projects? Erica?
Hi, Michelle. Thank you for the presentation and pictures. It's great. Um, it all looks good. Um, just wondering, will the interior walls be painted?
Um, you know, we were not planning on it because they were just painted. Um, I think once the lighting is upgraded, because it's it's actually not a bad color of yellow. It looks probably darker than it actually is in person. I think that's what you're probably referring to.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I've I've gotten that comment multiple times. Um, but so we were not planning on painting them because they were just kind of painted the last time it was um redone, which was only, I believe, in two thousand eighteen and it it they're, they actually look really well when you're in there. Um, but we will, we'll reevaluate like once the project, once the major components of the project are done, if there's still funds or if we, if it doesn't look as good um as it currently does because of all the construction that's going on. Um, you know, the shops are doing a really great job with not um uh creating more um of a a mess um to deal with after the fact. So I'm hoping that that continues. Um, but I think also, once the lighting is upgraded, it will actually look um brighter than it does at the moment.
Jeff, can I just add one more thing? During the construction process, Gil Vayner, a general contractor, used it and they had a staff sometimes of about fifteen, twenty people in there. And uh it worked out extremely well. Uh, and I know they loved being there, so.
Yeah.
It was, it was good space and this will be good space for that, too.
And those, those two rooms that I talked about are two of five rooms. So there are three other smaller rooms that are on the other side of the hallway in this property. It's about twenty-two hundred square foot property. Um, so those other three rooms in the property will are remaining as they were upgraded in two thousand eighteen. But they will work as like a teacher um kind of area and then a student area. And then I believe they're going to be doing um the third room with kind of like a another kind of lab um area as well. And we're working with the animal science teachers on, you know, placement and the movement and packing up their stuff and making sure that we're putting it in the right spaces um once we do officially move as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the report and thank you for keeping us up to date. Very interested in the topic. Look forward to its completion. Uh Alice?
Um, a lot of people won't probably know this, but um I'm really, really happy that we still have that property to use. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about that because it's important for sort of institutional knowledge that people understand this. There was a period of time starting in the early two thousands and then kind of come cropping up again in the middle of the teens. Um, when we were under tremendous pressure to sell all three of those houses and the uh property uh because there was a, I don't, I'm not sure exactly why, but there were people who were very interested in their getting a hold of it. So um we chose not to. Um, and by not selling the houses, we were actually um not subjected to any pressure from uh Butters when we built the new school in the new place. And we also have this building now to use to um to put the animal science in a proper space. So I just pass it on. There's, there are multiple pressures that are put on this school periodically that are not in the best interest of the school. And and we resisted and I I'm glad we did. That's all, that's all.
Yeah, if I can add to that, there are two other houses on Mill Street, which uh I strongly urge that we keep them and they uh can be used in some, some of the ways that I've talked about expansions. Don't let them go.
One of the things that uh when this proposal come, it's coming up for at least twenty years, okay? Twenty years it come up every once in a while. Let's sell the property, let's sell the building, let's earn some money and get rid of it because we don't need it. But what they don't take into account often when they state that, they look at the money that could come in, they don't look at the opportunity cost. This is a huge opportunity cost in giving up property. There's a huge opportunity cost in giving up buildings. So that's something that when they see the dollars that they that could bring in to maybe help a year's budget or for whatever reason, they forget about the long-term opportunities. Here's a perfect example of our ability to mitigate a very serious problem, not solve it, but mitigate it because we still have the property at a very reasonable fee. No property, we couldn't do it. So I will concur with Alice and Ford. And um, Mr. Superintendent, what's next?
Well, we have a report from our Director of Cooperative Education, Force Development, uh Christina Ju- Juthlin. Talk about our uh co-op program.
Um, thank you guys very much for having me here tonight. I've been really looking forward to um sharing a little glimpse into the co-op world with you because it's a world that I love and I'm super proud of a lot of the things that the kids are doing. So I just wanted to go give a little brief overview of what cooperative education entails and how kids qualify for anybody who might be newer to the school committee or not super familiar with the process, some numbers by programs and towns, and then to highlight a handful of our students and employers just so you can get a peek at what their lives are like when they leave the school to go out into the workforce. Um, so in order to qualify for cooperative education, a student, um it's open to juniors or seniors. Uh, juniors are become eligible second half of their junior year. They have to have been in their program for a year and a half. So if you had a student that transferred into a program late, we look at the time that they've spent in the program. So if you had a student that uh placed as a freshman, decided to change shops beginning of sophomore year, they could still qualify at the midway of their junior year point, as long as their teacher feels like they've met the competencies appropriately. If they were to join midway through their sophomore year, they would have to wait till their senior year to hit that one and a half year mark. They do have to have a B or better in their trade shop, in their trade um program. And they do have to have a C or better in all academic courses. Yes, even physical education. The kids ask me all the time, even gym, yes, even gym. Um, they go out to work at least thirty mi- uh thirty hours a week is their minimum. Uh, they can work more. A lot of our kids land at the forty-hour mark because a lot of times the companies that are hiring them are looking to fill a full-time job. It is week on, week off, obviously, which can be a little bit tough for employers. But whenever possible, we try to encourage employers to think about hiring a junior and a senior. And we work with them to understand whether or not that will work for them because then they're filling one full-time position and the kids are alternating week to week. And that often works out really well for them. Um, they do have to make minimum wage or higher, but they should be making they should be earning based on what is the norm for entry level in their field. So if they were going into a field with a very high entry level pay and they're getting offered sixteen dollars an hour, we don't want them to be taken advantage of as cheap or free labor. Um, but yes, they are still learning, so we don't expect them to be the top of the totem pole either. So we work with um companies to understand that. And we actually don't have a ton of problems with that. The companies are usually pretty willing to hire students, especially in the trades where there's such a need. Um, those students can um do very well for themselves as a senior or junior in high school. Um, so where we are right now, the seniors are currently eligible and we have sixty-six seniors out. We ended last year with only sixty seniors out in May, so we've already surpassed that. And I have a list, at least one page long, of students uh in the senior class that are still in the process of going out. Um, we're at more than forty percent of our senior class. Oh, hey, since we're approving so many new students, um the numbers go up quite quickly. So I want to say we're closing in on forty-five percent, but I wouldn't quote me on that, but I can say it's over forty percent for certain. And our juniors will be eligible in February. Uh, we look at their quarter-two grades, which the report cards will come out on January thirtieth. So their next shop week begins February twelfth and um they're already knocking down my door, ready to head out. So when we come back from Christmas break, they're going to inundate me because I told them that's when they can start applying. Um, but we can't approve anybody until we look at that last round of grades. Um, so to get the information out to juniors, a couple of things we've been doing. Um, I've talked to a handful of the shops that have had questions. I visited animal science and spent quite a bit of time with them and their instructor because it's brand new to them, brand new to the instructor. They had a ton of questions, so we spent probably about forty-five minutes or so just answering questions, looking at what co-op looks like, what they can expect, how they can start applying for jobs, um working on resumes, things like that. Uh, one of the language arts curriculums actually involves filling out job applications. So I'm going to be working with uh one of our English teachers, Bruce Gerard, and visiting some of his classes. And we're going to actually take the co-op application, which mimics a job application, and have them complete it and assist them with that. And then when it comes time for them to apply for co-op, all they'll have to do is take that information that they've already gathered, enter it into their online system and they'll be ready to go, which is excellent. Um, so they're in good shape and they are ready to head out. So just to get a look at who's going out in which programs, we have really good representation here. Um, the advanced manufacturing has an asterisk because I do have two students that were approved and out. And right now the company has um a little bit of a drought in work, so they're back in the building. Um, when the work picks up, they'd like those two students back. But just to make sure that we're kind of being truthful in our numbers here, uh it's sixty-six total, but those two are currently in the building with us. Um, so as you see, we've got a a good amount. We um have students in all, almost every single um shop that are out. Um, there's a couple that don't have anyone out. Obviously, animal science is not out yet. Um, horticulture, it, we, I think towards the spring, we might see students heading out. Um, but there's more and more applications every day. So just a quick look at the numbers by program. And then these are the breakdown of numbers by town. So each students that live in um your member towns, uh this is just so you get an idea of how many of them are out. And I actually did two site visits in Needham this week alone, so there's going to be two additional Needham students heading out very shortly as well, which is a good percentage for um for that town as well. So now to the fun part. Um, I really wish that I could highlight all sixty-six of our students and their employers, but we would be here all night and we're already creeping up on my bedtime and probably some other people's as well. So I selected a handful. I asked students and employers to provide some uh photos, write-ups, whatever they wanted to share. And it was always really exciting when we do this type of a thing is, um, I'm sure, I'm sure this will be a shock to you. High school students don't always read their emails. I know, shocking. Um, but when I send an email and I ask for pictures or stories or something I can share around the school or with the school committee, boom, right away. So I was very excited to get some of those things. So we're highlighting a handful of kids here, but I'm also working on some ways to highlight them within the building. Last year we had a bulletin board that had pictures of kids in action and where they were working and where they were from. And um we're hoping to get something like that up in the building as well. So to start with, um, this is uh some photos from Kissler and Knapp Builders. Uh, we do have a co-op student with them, Derek O'Brien. He's unfortunately, he's not in these two pictures. And when I uh contacted him today, he's, he's a very camera shy anyway. Um, but he said, no, 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 show the, show the junior class because we collaborated with um the junior class collaborated with Kissler and Knapp uh with the full carpentry class to uh take cabinets from a renovation house that Kissler was working on to salvage them, remove them safely. And it was, they donated them to the Habitat for Humanity house that the kids are working on. Um, so he was the one who said, why don't you ask them for pictures of the junior class? So I just wanted to shout Derek out because even though he's not on that slide, he is part of the reason that we have a highlight slide for Kissler and Knapp and he's a pleasure to work with. Next, we have uh Etha Kinnin, who is one of our electrical seniors, um who's just out there looking like a supermodel, rewiring commercial buildings, no big deal. Uh, she sent me a handful of pictures and her hair is never out of place. I need her secrets. Uh, but she gets a tremendous amount of wonderful feedback. Cummings absolutely loves her. Um, we do have another senior that just started out with Cummings, Shane Carter. And uh they are going to be hiring a junior come February as well. They do a lot to support us. And then I don't know if the video will play. It's only about a five, ten second video. There it goes. Uh, this is Kevin Silva from Lexington. He works at Marquee Tree Services and he does a lot of work with the um vans and equipment. And actually, both his brother and father work at Marquee Tree. So when he uh was setting out on his co-op journey, I asked him, are you very sure you want to do this? Because that's a lot of together time. Um, but they don't work together all day, every day. But uh he really enjoys working at Marquee and um I get great pictures from him and his family all the time, which is wonderful. Um, and just recently, we had an environmental student start with the town of Billerica, Department of Water and Sewer. He's predominantly working with wastewater at the treatment facility plants. That's Sam Cohen from um Environmental Science, lives in Concord. Um, he is doing an excellent job. Uh, he is on about his third or fourth week of work and he gets tremendous feedback as well. Um, Sam's also, I'm one of the Skills USA advisors and Sam is also a Skills USA student who has done excellent competition. So um I'm really glad to see him land in a place where he is incredibly happy. And all of you will know River, who is a celebrity here on the school committee. Um, so he is working at Saturday Robotics and again gets tremendous feedback and um he is doing a great job there. Um, this is Larissa Maya on the left from, she's working at the Pine Bro- Pine Brook Country Club. Um, when I asked her to send me pictures, I was starving by the end of looking through them. So very few pictures of her, which is why we picked this nice, fun, silly one. She did send me a serious one, but this is a little more her personality. Um, but the kind of uh events that they're catering are huge and she's been making all kinds of amazing food. And um she's really great about sending updates and things to be highlighted. And then this is uh, we have a squad here at Energy for the Common Good. So um we actually have four students, the whole first row of that picture are are Minuteman students. Uh, we have two from Environmental Science, one from Design and Visual Communication and one for programming and web development. So um the environmental students are working, they're assisting with research and curriculum development on clean energy sources. And they're actually going to be working with students in um elementary, middle schools, doing kind of presentations with the company. Um, Camille is our design and visual student and she's doing a lot of their social media presence, designing um websites. She's revamping a lot of their uh online presence and helping design graphics. And then um Max Larkin from um Programming and Web Development is their IT guru and he's also helping with some backend web development and he is assisting their operations manager. And he does a lot of um their kind of payroll, spreadsheets, data tracking as well. So incredibly valuable team that they have there at Energy for the Common Good. Um, this is Sophia Lasik from Biotechnology, who's working at the Reagan Institute of Mass General, MIT and Harvard. Um, she's doing some interesting things with cancer research. I won't go into depth because I will get it wrong and I will not do it justice. But she is a very, very intelligent young lady and they are ha- so happy to have her. This is the second year in a row that Reagan has taken on one of our students and and they've had a great experience with us. Um, due to the nature of early childhood, sometimes um the the programs are willing to send pictures where kids' faces are obscured. Sometimes they have a no pictures policy period. So when I reached out to employers, Concord Children's Academy said, you know, we can't send a picture, but we would just like to share how well our student is doing with us. So this is just a short write-up that they shared with us about Kayla Weber, who's an acting student who's working um at the Concord Children's Academy. And she's really been impressing um their teachers. They said their teachers have a lot of longevity and sometimes they have to remind themselves that she's a high school student because she takes such initiative and she's so valuable. So that's always feedback that we like to hear. Um, I have a handful of what we call, what I'm calling honorable mentions because by the nature of what they do, these are places that can't necessarily provide us with photographs, but But I wanted to highlight them because there, some are very prestigious and we're really excited to have the students there. And they've also been a work in progress for quite some time. So when Emerson and Winchester Hospital, both are hosting our health assisting students. So we have four at Emerson Hospital and three at Winchester Hospital. Winchester Hospital, because it's so large, when they, we had a student last year who wanted to do their co-op placement there at Winchester, she was working weekends. But once they started getting into the paperwork, their HR and legal wanted to have a more formal contract on their end so that the hospital up and down understood what their responsibilities were for a co-op student in addition to our paperwork. So there was a bit of back and forth, checking language, signing off. And it took from about September of last year to May to get an agreement in place that everybody was happy with. So our student who was working at Winchester actually never got to formally co-op at Winchester Hospital because by the time the program, we had gotten everything together, she was getting ready to graduate. So we made sure that we let all of the students this year know that they are working there because of Lily Campbell. And today, she paved the way for them, which is wonderful. And then on the right-hand side, the handful that are for biotechnology, just looking at those names, you know, looking at MIT, looking at Harvard Medical School, looking at Cancer Institute. These are really amazing places and we're really thrilled to be welcomed into them. And I just wanna give Pat Rafter and Scott Frank all of the credit in the world for being really persistent and really persuasive and tapping into every connection that they have to get the biotechnology students some really great opportunities. It's really been difficult to find programs for the biotech kids that will take students under eighteen and take students on paid. So they've been really working hard to get through the door. And once we're through the door, they tend to be really impressed with the kids and want more of them, but getting through the door can be tough. So just wanted to highlight those because they've kind of been a long work in progress. And then last but not least, I will end with our Minuteman co-op students. So we have four students working with us in the building, which is wonderful. We have Jolena from our Culinary Arts Program who works for Fresh Picks Cafe, which is the, a program that we contract with to provide student lunches. We've been getting great feedback on the student lunches and it's wonderful to see Jolena there smiling every day. Bee Cardon is in the Colonial Children's Academy. She was a co-op student there for the second half of her junior year and then she's been with us full senior year so far. They adore Bee and she's been a huge help in the early ed program. And then we have, we have Sam Keller, who's our student theater manager, who makes the magic happen with all of our theater rentals. And he's an incredibly hard-working student. And then last but certainly not least, we have Sydney Judd, who's assisting in marketing and admissions. And it's tough to get an action shot of Sydney because she is behind the scenes, taking all of the amazing pictures that you're seeing on social media and the website. So she's behind the camera and it's tough to get a shot of her because she's in and out, in stealth mode, kind of assisting Aaron Norson and getting the money shot for all of our marketing admissions and social media. So that is it for me, I welcome any questions you may have, but thanks for letting me take a handful of, a few minutes of your time and highlighting a handful of these kids because we're really proud of the work that they're doing.
All right, school committee members, questions and comments? Board?
Outstanding. You know, I think I've been, I don't know how long I've been on this committee, but I've never seen on the co-op part, any presentation like this. And it's, that's very, very helpful to all of us on the committee. Because we get asked sometimes, do, how many people do co-ops and all that? I probably tell lies. Here it is, the truth. I mean, when I say lies, I'm exaggerating. So I haven't been exaggerating, that's great, thank you.
My pleasure.
And well, I am also incredibly impressed by the list of, of assignments that these kids do. I assume this is a formal method of feedback from the employer to let you know, oops. Yeah, so the employer to let you know how they're doing, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, actually, I'm glad that you highlighted that. So every, every week when the students come back to the school on Monday morning, they turn in essentially like a timesheet to us that's separate from what they turn in to their employers. They write out their hours so we can verify that they're working the number of hours they're supposed to. And they describe what they've been working on during the course of the previous week. And once they sign off on that, it goes directly to their employer. And their employer has a time, like a scorecard that they fill out for them where they can check off a score and there's a place for feedback. The employers are great about giving feedback. Some of them don't write a ton on the grade sheet, but when I follow up with the students and ask if they're getting feedback, a lot of them are getting real-time feedback from their employer, which is what co-op is all about. We want them working and getting experience, but we want that mentoring piece. So a lot of them are every single day getting feedback from their employers. But formally, they get that feedback at the end of the week. And once the employer scores, it's visible to me, it's visible to the student and it's visible to their instructor as well. And that's where their shop rate will come from.
And I'm wondering if any of the, if the list of places where students do have co-ops is used in any of our marketing materials?
I know it is in some, I mean, that would be probably a better question for Aaron Norson if she's around, but we do have some on the website. And I know that she highlighted earlier in the year on some of our social media, she had different lists of which students were going to which places from which program. So I believe she has, I'm pretty sure she has open access to my data and spreadsheet so that she can pull from those as she needs. But yeah, we're getting a lot of really, really impressive places that are starting to notice our students, which is.
I'm just thinking that there are some parents and some communities who may not have as high a regard for Minuteman students as is deserved. And this.
So we should tell them that they work at Harvard.
The list of places that you're able to have co-ops for students may change some minds or give them something to think about.
I agree.
That's just a thought. So thank you very much for this complete presentation. As has been mentioned, we haven't ever seen this before and we're very happy to see it today. Thank you very much and I guess, we're not done yet, there's still more fun to.
Thank you, Christina. Yes, we do, we, Drew Connors is gonna give us a technology update. You see Drew at meetings all the time, he's our director of technology and we thought we'd ask him to give an update on what he's up to in the, in the IT world. Drew?
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for taking some time to listen to me about technology. It's a quick update, just some ideas of where we're going and some things that might be driving the budget a little bit. So for those of the, the school committee members who are new, this is my sixth year at Minuteman. I founded the multimedia program in the last year in the old building. It's my eleventh year in education. So we are fully staffed in the IT department now. With me as the director, John Pelletier is a familiar face, he is back as our network administrator. He is a Minuteman graduate, he worked here for a little while, he left, he's come back. So that is an exciting Minuteman success story. And Josh Bullier is our computer technician. He, he came on board as we moved into the new building, so he's been around for a while. Some focus areas that I see as, as needs for the department that we have been working on. Number one, documentation. We wanna make sure that we have procedures documented, all of the important information documented so that if anybody needs to come in and take over for any reason, they're not searching around for things. We also want to simplify, we have, excuse me, some older equipment that we are moving to newer equipment. The equipment already exists, we're just kind of trying to consolidate things down. As a request from Jeff, we're working on our, a technology plan, both short and long term. So that should be coming before your eyes pretty soon. There's a lot of stuff that came into the building that I probably wouldn't have moved into the building. So we're trying to clean up and purge and make the IT department a more inviting space for, for staff and students. And then we're taking a fresh look at the budget. So some budget updates, some non-annual reoccurring expenses. We did get an amendment to S R three approved. So engineering, robotics and advanced manufacturing will all be getting new labs relatively soon. They were ordered and those machines are probably seven, eight, nine years old and they're kind of our, our most computer-intensive shops. So those need to be replaced, so those will be coming soon. The other labs in the building were very recently refreshed, programming web got new labs last year. And then fine arts, design and visual multimedia were all refreshed with FY twenty-two funds right at the beginning of FY twenty-three. And a standard refresh is four to five years for those labs. So we'd be looking at those again, you know, end of FY twenty-six, going into twenty-seven. But there's some play there. We, I really kind of started at zero for the technology budget and built it up based on reoccurring expenses and the needs of the district, staff and students. We're gonna be in year one of a phase staff laptop refresh. There are about sixty-five staff laptops out there in the wild that are approaching six years old. So those, those need to be refreshed. And we really solidified it, solidified the one-to-one laptop program as a, as a reoccurring expense. So we're not coming before you to ask for a big transfer at the end of the fiscal year to purchase student laptops. This is the last year that we still have ThinkPads out there for students. After this year, everybody will have basically the same model of ProBook from HP with different generations, obviously. Katie, if you could go to the next slide, that would be great. One of the big things that we're also looking at after conversations with Kevin, when, when he came on board, is our, our focus around cybersecurity. And there's just some, some points here. Last year, about fifty-six percent of K-12 districts experienced some kind of cybersecurity incident. Whether that's a ransomware attack where we really lose access to everything for a solid, a significant period of time or release of student data, whether that be discipline, special ed. We've seen a lot of, of things get released, which obviously we don't want to have happen. Ninety-one percent of those incidents started with email phishing. So providing some training around that and there are some grants from the, the Commonwealth. And next year, those grants are providing PDPs. So we should be able to get some more buy-in from our staff to complete those. And then we're looking to expand our cybersecurity stance. Those are some, some of the vendors that we looked at and demoed. And you'll be seeing more of that in the formal budget presentation. We have a vulnerability assessment that should be wrapping up tomorrow. And we'll have a report to show to you basically like where the holes are in our network infrastructure, in our security stance and where we're gonna plug them up. Yeah, so it's really just about simplifying, making sure that everything is working well for the staff and the students and providing the support that they need when they ask for it. Any questions?
My only comment is that technology here was less expensive and simpler when I started a quarter century ago. So it's gone up and the thing that is very disturbing is the fact that the cybersecurity is very, gonna be very expensive. It is absolutely needed. You've read in the news, all the hackings, all the attacks that, that there are and stealing public information and taking away people's ability to access their own technology with the ransomware and all of that kind of stuff. And sad but true that we have to become at least experts in the vendors who give you services that help you oversee your computer system. And it's, it's gonna be a lot, it's a fair amount of money that we have to pay, that that's just the way that the world is now, the technological world.
Very true, Jeff, thank you.
And the other comments or questions on technology? And one of the themes you heard here and you hear elsewhere is that we really do need to come up with long-term capital plans. So that's, we, something that's gonna be a theme coming up.
There was also, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Yep, go ahead.
There were also some new, I'm sure, Alice, you saw them. There were some new policies around technology released today from M A S E or yesterday. That as we, as you review them, if, if you want to sit down and look through them together, I'm happy to come into those meetings.
Thursday, nine thirty. Drew, I was just, I actually was just gonna say, we just got some new policies yesterday, so yeah, we'll be reviewing them.
Sounds good.
Alice, were you gonna say something else?
I was gonna say that we'll, we'll check with Kevin on how he wants to handle the bulk of the policies and then we'll, we'll proceed a pace.
There were a lot.
Great, just great, okay. Thank you very much, Drew, and I think we have one more item.
We do. We do, we have Nancy Hool, Director of our Minuteman Technical Institute, wants to give an update on the Open House event we had in the November, Nancy.
Good evening and thanks to everyone for hanging in there to hear about some events that have happened and are planned for Minuteman Technical Institute. This is my sixth year as the Executive Director and I, I finally feel like programming is pretty much where I would like it to be. We've had some revamping over the five years, but we've got a good, strong, solid team and we're going to build on that. So in November, we had an open house. We had about fifty prospective students and families, which may not seem like a lot, but those folks that did come in had very specific questions of very specific programs. They knew who they wanted to speak to, they, they just had a few things that essentially they wanted to clear up about enrolling in a program. And we were able to assist them in that by providing information. Or they had the advantage of being able to speak directly to the instructor and current students, got a lot of great information from those folks. We did have some guests as well, Eversource showed up with five current employees and they hit the automotive students, they hit the plumbing students, they talked to the electrical students, they were unable to get into the welding class, but they are desperate for workers in all of those areas. So we have one student that has applied already to Eversource to work in their Fleet Services Department. We have two more out of the automotive program that are interested. Our plumbing students, six of them are already currently employed. So maybe our seventh student will be interested in working for Eversource. And then Mass Hire Metro Southwest had a representative with us at Open House to talk about any financial support and also the approval process for joining one of our C T I grant-funded programs as well as Mass Hire W O A, which works with younger students aged sixteen to twenty-four. We also had Contractors Night for our Build It students and we had five contractors from five different companies there to talk directly with the carpentry students about what to expect from their contractor once they get hired. We were also fortunate to have two alumni Build It students who are currently in there, in the they've been in their apprenticeship for a year and a half, so they're almost vested. And they were very helpful in sharing their transition story from student to apprentice and provided a lot of good insight to our current students. We started another cohort of facilities management and in the first two nights of class, they had call-in visits from representatives in the HR departments of A B M, Newmark, J L L and Sedexo, which are all property management companies that look for these students once they are accredited. So that was a great way to start the class off. And this week, we're having the Build It Certificate Ceremony, five o'clock on Thursday. Next Thursday at six o'clock, we're having the certificate ceremony for plumbing, welding, robotics and facilities management. So you all are more than welcome to come and join. And then we start again with marketing and recruiting, working closely with Mrs. Norson to develop and carry out plans to attract and retain students. In February of twenty twenty-four, we have new C T I grant-funded cohorts beginning. Certificate ceremonies for those folks in May, along with an open house. In June, we will have our summer C T I cohorts begin. And of course, from January. And of course, from January, right up until the first week of September, we will continue to market and recruit for our MTI students. With another open house in November of 2024, another Contractors Night. So you can see that we're developing a, a calendar of events that support all the facets of what our adult students look for as they transition into new careers. Next slide, please. So where do we have opportunities for growth in MTI? So we need to find a way to engage all applicants and retain all students. We do get a great number of applicants. But sometimes they drop off. They don't follow through. We call and get no response. So I'm not sure what the disconnect is. And then every year we have students that go through the process of applying, becoming accepted, making some initial payments, and then they drop from the program. So we're going to work on some mitigation efforts there to engage and retain all students who are interested. Continue outreach to local high schools with marketing focused directly on school counselors and parents. And then continue our engagement with local business, industry and labor unions. I'd like to up upgrow, if that's a word, our social media presence, again with the assistance of Mrs. Norson. It's important to know that for a period of time, for about five and a half or six months, the spring and summer of 2023, which is a real heavy recruiting, marketing time for MTI. We were without the guidance of a marketing professional. For what that's worth, it's something to consider. Currently I do hold weekly meetings with Mrs. Norson. We meet for about an hour each week. And we talk about different strategies for getting MTI's face and voice out into the public. And she's assisting me in the development of a structured marketing plan that would mirror the one that she shared with you earlier in the presentation. With regard to revenues for this MTI tuition-based program season, tuition was raised for the first time in five years and beginning in January. First program starting in August twenty-four that are tuition-based, the materials fee will be raised from a thousand dollars per student to fifteen hundred dollars per student. We see a lot of our costs going to procuring consumables, procuring materials and the shipping and delivery costs have increased a lot as well. So as much as I try to resist having to raise our tuition because I know that really when we ask candidates for application, what attracted them to Minuteman Technical Institute, they say the location and the price. And I just don't want to price ourselves out of the market. So with the support from the business office, the super, the interim superintendent and our marketing director, we'll be able to kind of keep an eye on that. But I'm always wanting to keep MTI accessible to anyone that wants to come to us. Next slide, please. And of course, remembering our why, I shared this slide at our last meeting, but I put some new pictures in there because some of the MTI students had really great opportunity to meet directly with the Secretary of the Navy, as was mentioned earlier. We were able to present him and make him our first honorary MTI graduate. He does have a master's in electrical engineering. So I thought it was only appropriate that we give him a certificate in electricity because he has certainly earned it. And I think he was, he was kind of tickled to have that. And two of our students were able to attend the Pearl Harbor recognition and remembrance ceremony the day prior to the secretary's visit to our school. One of the students, while we were in Cambridge, we found the playground named after his great uncle who served in World War II. So not only was it a good experience socially, building adequate etiquette, I'm so sorry, building etiquette and you know, doing something new, it just, you know, the offerings at Minuteman High School and hopefully at MTI just broaden the experience for anyone that works with us. So I'm really excited. Love my job and appreciate everyone's support. Thank you.
Okay, questions and comments on our latest report?
Yeah.
Alice?
Just excited to see so many opportunities for adults who want to change careers or just do something in depth that they haven't been able to try before. I think it's very important. Many, many students graduate from high school and then decide, whoops. I know. And, and it's just, it's just great to see this opportunity for so many young adults. I wish more people knew about it. And I'm glad you're going to expand the use of social media for that.
We're going to make that happen, Alice. We're going to make more people know about it. We are going to do that. And I forgot to mention, if I could, three of our current welding students already have viable job offers for January. They're finishing up the twenty-first and starting work January. Two welders will have offers from Steel Fab in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts. They make heavy weldment. A lot of hydro equipment and they also make propulsion systems for the US Navy. And one of our students, I'd beside myself with excitement about this one, got an offer from General Dynamic Electric Boat in Rhode Island. So I think that's amazing. So, you know, they're coming in. You have to meet these, these students. Their stories are amazing. They're amazing. They just make everything worthwhile. And if you have time this Thursday or next, please come and meet some of them.
Other comments or questions? Ford?
This is just an integral part of what we do at Minuteman and, and sometimes I don't think it gets enough attention. And I think it's important that more than periodically that MTI comes and talks to us about what goes on because, and, and I know Nancy, for you to be here for so long waiting, thank you for your patience, but it, it was, it's really important. And I think the marketing effort is so important to reach out to the communities around us. And not just our own communities, but the communities around us. And you know, there needs to be ways to figure out how to do that. Social media, of course, is we may have to venture out and do some advertising in other medias like radio or, or I'm not sure printed ads, but radio or even going to malls and, and I think we've done that before. How to do that. So reaching out to young adults that are looking for an opportunity, or they may not know they're looking for an opportunity to, to grow. My God, the trades certainly need an influx of, of, of people coming in and, you know, we're doing great with high school students. But post-high school students are, are absolutely critical to get some education and move on. Thank you, Nancy. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And I believe that that is the end of the interim superintendent's report. Am I correct?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Well, I thank you, Kevin, for setting this all up and I thank all the speakers. It was in a very important, a huge amount of information that gave everybody a really good view of many aspects of what the school is doing that you may not have known before. Very, very valuable reports, all of them, without exception, well presented.
Great, thank you.
Thank, please do. Policy Subcommittee, Alice DeLuca.
Hey there. So there's something like three hundred and thirty policies in our manual, some of which need to go away because they're not in use. And over the past several months, Sharon and I have been working on reviewing the policies specifically in Section I, which accounts for about seventy-five or more policies out of that three hundred. So you have to just be prepared that those are all going to eventually come to the school committee to read and, and review and, and vote on. So you know, I'm just warning you ahead of time, so it's not a big surprise. But right now we have a table which Sharon put together, which shows that we have reviewed them and that they're ready to go to the administration for them to review them because really the administration is going to have to live with these things. We don't really know a lot about some of the things. And, and they have to be something that the school can work with. So it's not just the school committee has to approve them. It has to be something the school district can use in their day-to-day functioning. But I would like to just speak a little bit about one of the central problems of the policy system that is used in the state of Massachusetts and the schools. It's something that needs to be fixed. It is something that has caused untold headaches for every school district, as far as I can tell, for as long as I've been on a school committee. Which is as follows. We have an online copy of our policy manual. We also have archival copies. We have a, a master copy, which Julia holds, and then both Sharon and I have a paper copy. These are important because occasionally websites go down, you can't get ahold of your policies, they get hacked, you can't, they get written over, whatever. And in fact, over the summer, MASC's entire system was down for months because of hacking. And every school district that had their policies on MASC's policy system, which is actually run out of the state of Connecticut, was not able to get onto those things. So if you, you must keep an archival paper copy somewhere in, for that reason. The other place that policies live is in a student handbook. Once the student handbook is approved, that is the date of record of the vote of the school committee on anything that is a policy in there. Like say you had a policy on, I don't know, driving go-karts. And you had one policy in your policy manual and one that had been approved at the school committee in the handbook. The one that was approved more recently is the official policy of the school district. They are not always aligned. In fact, they're usually not aligned because they're cut, each, each one of these documents is constantly being updated. And then MASC does their policy bulletins. And you probably all received an email this week that had, raise your hand if you didn't receive the MASC policy update this week.
I don't think, I don't recall receiving that.
Okay, so you haven't had the lovely opportunity to read these. But they, they go through and they revise them based on new laws, based on things that have happened. And we are supposed to update our manual to reflect the changes that MASC has, has sent us. Some of them apply to vocational schools, some of them don't. So what the, the problem is that this is not what's called single-source documentation. It's five different sources that keep splitting. So no matter what you do, your policy manual is kind of always out of sync with some other thing that we're supposed to be using to determine how to run a school. It's, it's a terrible system. And in my opinion, just from having worked on them for so long. And I, I'd like to see that fixed somehow. It's not something Minuteman's going to fix, but it needs, it needs to change. And anyway, that, I just wanted to alert you to that because embedded in all these policies are references to laws. And Sharon and I have found two really hilarious laws that had nothing at all to do with the policies that they were listed on. These came from MASC, new. So you know, it's, it's like playing Clue to read these things. So in a couple of weeks, this week, we're going to finish Section I on Thursday, and then we will give it over to Kevin. And Kevin will figure out how he wants to handle the internal review of the various policies. He'll see which ones we think can just be accepted as is, which ones can be deleted as is recommended by MASC and which ones really need pretty strong review by the school district, inside the school district because they're, they're important and they're complicated and they have to do with the day-to-day actual instructional stuff regarding kids. So that's what we're working on. And pretty soon they'll all come back to the school committee. And it will be a, a lot of reading. And it's interesting, there are a couple of funny things, so we'll make sure to point out the funny things.
Comments and questions? Ford?
I don't know why I'm asking so much. Sometimes they're just quiet during the meeting, but this has been an awesome meeting. Alice has been doing this for as long as I've known her and it's wonderful having a volunteer to do this. But given this information that you've just given us and the various sources that policies are, come to school. Do other schools have a staff member that's responsible for this and that can keep up and somebody that's paid to do the job? And it, it just sounds like it's overwhelming. And you know, if Alice and Sharon decide they're not going to do this anymore, I'll tell you, I'm not going to volunteer. So, and Alice knows that. The question is, is how do the schools keep up with this kind of thing? And, and
I don't think they do afford.
Designated staff member in every school, not just Minuteman, in every school to keep up with it. I, I just, or you have MASC being able to do it all electronically. I don't know. But MSC couldn't do that because not all the schools are the same. So you know, this is an open system.
Or even in the, in the newsletter that came out yesterday, they listed the wrong code on one of the, one of the policies that we're supposed to review doesn't, it's the right title for it, but they shifted the letters on it. So that when I clicked on it, I'm like, we have one that's completely different. And then I realized that, you know, even their attention to detail just makes it like, like Alice and I, Alice said, you know, we've gone through each one and checked the references and we're like, why is this talking about, you know, I don't know. Something crazy, fire retardant clothing, that it has nothing to do with what policy is. And so we've, we've really, we meet every week to go through and we're chipping away at it, but every time we think we're done, they add more. So.
But in this world of litigation, in the world of where we can get in trouble, I mean, I think schools and people can get in trouble because somebody can point out that you're doing something to a student that is you're not supposed to do, and here's a policy that backs it up. And, and so that's why I'm quite serious. It sounds like there should be somebody in our school systems that are responsible for keeping up and being connected to all the sources that would be made. So.
Ford, I, I believe that if you have a much longer, much larger school district with a large central office, they may be able to afford to have one person who does the central policies. We can't do that. Let me point out a little history lesson here. We, our policies, going back four superintendents now, our policy books was a disaster. Parts of it hadn't been updated since the seventies. We were called to task by that by some of the rating agencies who basically came in here and said, your policy book is a disaster. I was chair at the time and I tried four different methodologies to gather a group together to be able to fix the policy book. All of them failed. Between school committee members and staff members and MASC, all the ways of putting people together to get this problem, intractable problem solved until Alice got involved. So we had at least a partial solution to this problem because we happened to have Alice. Very few people I've ever known could have taken this disorganized mess with people in the administration who are very reluctant to get involved. And I know how much Alice had to push to get them appropriately involved. She fixed it and it was important to get it fixed because that's one of the things that had to be fixed before we could have a new school. Right? We had to get finances fixed. Kevin Mahoney did a lot of that. We had to get the policies fixed. That was Alice DeLuca. So we had the right people here to help solve these problems. And I don't have any easy solution to any of the things that Alice brought up. The only thing that does cross my mind, Alice, is, is not possible to make a electronic copy of what we have online and archive it.
Sure.
So, yeah, that's what I do for backup is you have a history of archives. So then you find out, see, So yeah, that's what I do for backup is you have a history of archives. So then you find out, see, so every month or every week, you take another copy of it. And then you find out that two months ago, your system was hacked and everything since then was bad. We go two months and a half back. So you don't lose as much. And since the policy book isn't that big, it would fit on a little teeny thumb drive. So I think that the I T staff may be able to help you with at least keeping a good copy of what we have online and protect it from um hacking by having a history of it, which you back it up every single week in a different place. Well, physical is good, but electronic is good too.
Yeah, it's not a lot of kilobytes, but it is um it is, it's something to think about.
Yes, that that is probably a solvable. That one is the only one on your list that I think is probably easily solvable.
I think the single-source documentation part of the the problem could be the student handbook and the manual having having the same source material um so that it isn't split at that point.
Also, Allison Berry uh just sent a uh a uh message in the system that they do backup the the systems periodically or.
We have those. Yeah, Drew was texting me at the same time. Allison was uh on the chat. They do exist.
Right. I know that Kevin loves to look through these policies, so I know as soon as you give him I, he's gonna just get right to it and he'll have a lot of fun doing that. I know that for a fact. So uh, right, uh Sharon.
I just wanna um kind of piggyback on what you said about how lucky we are to have Alice on this committee because I will tell you that um the institutional knowledge that she has as we're going through these policies and she'll say like, well, I can tell you why this policy existed because this happened at this school back in this day, not necessarily even our school. But I think just like, it's so important that we have, because I might have looked at that and been like, what's the point of this one? But you have the institutional knowledge of knowing not just why it is for us, but why it is sort of in the state. And I just think that it's really important.
You're all gonna have to adopt that institutional knowledge and like make it your own.
I'm trying, I'm learning. But no, I just, I think that we're very lucky to have your um your background knowledge in all of this.
Thank you. I'm I'm happy to have Sharon working on policy because her attention to detail is very good. You guys are lucky to have that. She's very good. She learns quickly and she's a good person to have working on this stuff too.
Well, thank you.
So I believe that that finally brings us to the end of the agenda. Interestingly, we had no critical votes today. It was a long meeting because of the amount of information we had to transmit. It was not hard, though. These were no critical votes, but here we are at the end. It was a great meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? By the second.
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 Well, call vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsia.
Erica, you were cut off.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Erica Elsia.
Yeah, okay, I'll accept that, Steve.
Okay, sorry, M S E. I don't know, I'm not sure what's going on.
I heard it.
Yeah. Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Edward Spelling, W S.
Charlie Gabor Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostel Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven, Needham, yes.
Alice Silicones, yes.
Thank you, school committee members. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, staff members. Have a good evening. See y'all later.